The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
All right, I'll call a meeting to order and I will turn it over to whoever's starting.
That'll be me. Thank you Brenda. Tonight, the leadership team from the district office will be presenting to you our Through Line of Accountability and Improved Student Success work. What you'll see throughout this is, and I, we have for you, because it, because we are just in a working stage, a couple of these documents are still in draft form. You should have each a PowerPoint in front of you, but we also tried to position the board, so if they wish to follow along up on the screen, that's available as well. We can post this after tonight's meeting. And in addition to that, our hope for this is that this is the first of many ongoing opportunities for us to work together to really get at not only the work that we do, but also to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the board in the best way we know how. So that's, that's part of our priority. So as we begin tonight and think about our work together, our agenda is...
Michelle, could I just interrupt a minute?
Sure.
Ed and I talked this afternoon and there are a lot of material that is going to be presented tonight. And I think in the interest of time, because we usually are very good at asking lots of questions, but in the interest of time, I think if we could hold our questions until the end, because some of them may get answered as we move forward. However, with that said, if there are questions that you have that, that you need to know what someone's talking about, because you don't understand something, or you don't understand what is being referenced, or you know, some question you need to ask in order to follow along with what the presentation is, then feel free to ask those. But in terms of substantive questions, I think we'll let the, the team give their whole presentation and just keep track of your questions and we can ask those at the end. Actually, I mean, we'll have a lot of time to ask questions, so.
Hopefully, there will be. I think the other pieces, we all have a tendency to have different kinds of riddled knowledge that I think will be important to share. There may be things where you'll see some gaps or things that you say, you know, that should probably be there, let's talk about it. So I would invite those as well when we wrap up the different parts of the presentation, because this is, this is what we're going to share tonight as an outward-facing document with you. So as we look at our agenda for tonight, obviously, I want to welcome all of you and really looking forward to this conversation tonight. I'll talk a little bit about our, our objectives for our time together. Then we'll quickly review the educational learning system, because our goal is to not only talk about it, but even give you some examples of what that looks like. We have some video clips embedded in our conversation tonight, so you can see what it looks like in the classroom and activity. We'll talk about the relationship with the district office and how the work that we do and, and our work impacts student achievement. And then more specifically, drill down into the strategic framework and the goals. We have five-year goals set out with metrics in a document that will be an outward-facing document. Often, one of the key priority areas for a Board of Education is to make sure that there is a high level of accountability and metrics to support that. And you'll see those metrics within, and we'll show you how you can access those metrics and monitor them. And then spend some time with Through Line Accountability and focus around literacy and math. And then how do we really operationalize the success plans for elementary and secondary? Those are real key areas. One of the things that we do when we meet as a leadership learning team, and the word "learning" is really important to us, because in order to transform an organization, we learn together. And I have to share with you that the documents that you see in the presentations tonight have really afforded us the ability to learn a lot from each other, and we don't always agree. So, they're smiling. As a result of that, we always have norms with our meetings and, and always try to be very engaged in our communication and respectful in our dialogue to make sure that we stay focused in on topic. We used to use the word squirrel, try not to squirrel, and really try to be very focused in our, our conversations. So as we think about our objectives, our, one of the objectives is to really expand the, the board understanding of how we as a team operationalize the board work, which is the mission and the vision of the core values and strategic directions. And tonight, we're focusing on literacy and math, and literacy and numeracy through the educational learning system. We want to ensure that, that there is a clear understanding of the five-year goals and metrics and how to monitor those resulting in the student achievement and the district priorities, and then have a very robust discussion about Through Line Accountability, what does it mean, and how, if we all do our work in those areas, do we see improved student achievement? In your document with the cute kids on the front cover, I should have one of those, it's about the third page from the end, the same educational learning system. And I'll touch base on it when we get to that part in that document. Really, we talk about the importance of ensuring equity for each and every child we serve, and equity is indeed the pathway to proficiency. This particular graphic that you see is, can be found at the Department of Public Instruction. And really, we'll talk more specifically about the importance of the key components within that, that cycle of improvement or continuous improvement cycle. So as you think about our work tonight, you'll hear about the universal curriculum, you'll hear about the supports around multi-level systems of support, both for behavior as well as for academics, and then all of those other pieces around engagement and evidence of practice and so forth. And what's behind it, you saw actually the other night, the educational learning system, these are the gears that drive the, the continuous improvement cycle. And I think what's really important to note is that if those pieces don't fit together and they, there's such an interdependency that you can see in those linkages, that without a gear working, there's a problem. So, you know, when I look up there, I, I think about a student who is not able to access an opportunity or be engaged in a, in a, an experience that we want for each and every child, and then that takes that deep navy blue gear out, and then it's not working anymore. So what do we do to address that? So, and that's more, more detail underneath, I won't go back to that, but that's there for you for later, for your deeper understanding. And one of the things that we think about in terms of our leadership within the district office and student achievement, we have some really important responsibilities. And one of those is to make sure that the board goals translate very well. And so we do ensure collaborative goal setting, not only for us at the district level, but also with the school level and so forth. And in addition to that, we talk about what's not negotiable. You know, what are the non-negotiables around those goals and around instruction to ensure student achievement? How do we ensure board alignment with the support of the district goals? And that's what you really see in the Through Line of Accountability. How do we monitor achievement? And how do we make it very transparent for you as our board with that expectation around accountability, around the instructional goals? And then how do we allocate the resources to align, to ensure achievement and instruction? And the other piece I wanted to share with you, we've been reading a, a book about the work of central office, written by Bob Marzano, who talks about these best practices, district leadership that works, it's cited in there. And as, as a team, we've been reading it and talking about the importance of our work as a central office team, making sure that we have those clear goals and we constantly monitor them to make sure they're being met, that we have that shared understanding of what it takes, what are the conditions the goals are, are to be met. And then how do we intervene, correct of action if we see that we're off course and have to get back on? That's a high-level overview of where, of the work that we've been doing. And one of the areas, and how do I? That'd be good. What we, what we know to be true is that people in our community really expect to see what our work looks like, and they want to know things, and they absolutely should. As a parent, as a community member, as a taxpayer, whatever role our community members play. And this particular document is intended to be an outward-facing document. And within there, the document, we will see a number of areas that actually are very important to the success of students around the action steps that are actually being taken and so forth. So thinking about the strategic work, which is board work that was set out for us. And that's the bottom, so this is how this thing's going to go, huh? That's not going to work, Vicky.
Michelle, this is linked with a couple of versions that go, so I need to send you a updated one. I didn't realize you were going to put it in this file.
Oh, well, we can go through this too.
Michelle, while you're waiting for that, not a question, but just a suggestion here.
Sure.
As we use specific terms, would you take a moment and define them? Because we are sharing this with the public as well.
Oh, very, yeah.
You are going to define Through Line Accountability.
Absolutely.
But when you say outward-facing...
Oh, I'm, yeah, public.
What do we mean by that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, anything that, when you, when I think of things that go outward, it means everything the public should see, that we want to make sure they're able to access. Yep, so this particular document will be, will be put, put online. You know, we won't, and what's really nice about this document, we took all of our work and your work, the strategic directions and the mission and vision, put them all together, put our metrics in there, so that anyone could look at what are they doing? And each year, we need to update it and go public with it, make sure that people can follow along. And, and what's nice about it is if people are out in the community, if board members are out, you can take parts of the book with you, depending upon what topics you'll be discussing, and there were probably additions that you'd like to add and so forth. So the first page of the book is really just this framework, and it talks about, it's a strategic framework, and the reason those dates are there, from 2018 to 2023, we have five-year goals included. The, the next page really focuses in, and the next three pages, around the district's core mission, to educate every student to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. The board also laid out the vision statement, and that really focuses in on what we intend to create. And so it really speaks to the work inside in the, the district priorities, basically are intended to reflect this vision statement that the board established, focused in around data-informed decision-making, driving for results, comprehensive and responsive academic opportunities, families empowered to advocate, community partnerships, effective and efficient management of all resources, and so forth. In addition, the core values are clearly stated around excellence, engagement, equity, integrity, and responsibility, and those definitions are there for anyone to read and, and reflect on and certainly reference at their will. The next page is really focused in on who we are as a district at a glance, looking at our schools, the demographics, and some important data points that our community sometimes speaks to me about, and I know others as well. How many schools do you have? And we have forty-two. How many educators do we have with advanced degrees? And we have over one thousand, one thousand ninety-six. How many Golden Apple winners in the district? Ninety-plus. How many staff? And so forth. And how many students do you serve? And what is their ethnic or demographic background? In addition to that, obviously, another important part of what boards of education do is really the budget, and we just adopted it. And some key, key ideas that the community would like to know or reference points, we've included in this particular page. As we think about the work of our staff and our students and our community in our schools, we think about typically around instruction, but a lot of our instruction is enhanced by a framework through technology. And so we decided to include some very important parts of who we are with technology. When I came in 2011, we had, we were just getting Wi-Fi. And so we've come quite a long way. One of the areas that Diane Durs is here tonight, and you're going to hear a little bit more, she talks about your, your metrics and how you access them through Y's dash local, is really talking about the importance of the connectivity and the cost savings. The Board of Education has invested in connecting to a wide-area network, so we aren't reliant on wind stream and paying constant costs through Brown County. So that ring of fiber, it's at forty-two of our buildings. We have, and this is just in one year, if I'm accurate, Diane, that distributed thirteen thousand Chromebooks. We have one-on-one devices for all of our students at secondary. We have laptops just recently deployed, two thousand of them, to our employer, employees and our staff. And then we are seeing some significant improvements of families hooking into the Infinite Campus Parent Portal. And a lot of great work has gone into that to make sure that parents have access. So teams have gone into open houses and tried to create some wonderful opportunities to support parents in this, in this connection, because we feel parents is, parents play such a critical role in the success of their children. And then the other piece is there's ongoing summer learning and sessions offered all the time. One of the things that's not on here, that's a very important part for our students though, as people may not know, is that our students who do not have access to, to Wi-Fi at home are given a hotspot tool that is filtered called a Kajit, and they are able to check that out and keep that, and then they can also check out a computer. So that they are, supporting our children, twenty-first century learning is critical. In addition, we have a whole section on community engagement with some very important highlights around some of the supports, but there's far more than this, but we just put that in there as an offering. And one of the areas that we feel that is very important for our students is making sure that our facilities are not only welcoming and clean, but also that they best meet their needs within the classroom setting, whether it be making sure that they're safe, and you can see the, the safety grants included, whether they have, are efficient in how we deliver our energy, and you can see there are energy efficiency exemptions highlighted here, keeping our, our schools well-maintained. Three point five million is budgeted yearly to make sure that occurs. And then, of course, we're in process of a sixty-eight point two-five million dollar facilities referendum that our voters were approving in April of 2017 with seventy percent voter approval. So keeping that in mind, and obviously, the community can go out and look at those facilities, we keep them up to date and online as well. Then just some highlights about many, many community partners through corporate, higher ed, nonprofit, and municipal. So people sometimes like to see who we partner with on various efforts. And then in addition to that, then we get to the body of work around academic achievement and academic excellence, personalized pathways, engagement, and thriving workforce. These particular documents you've seen before, but what you haven't seen is found beginning on page eleven, where you'll find the five-year goals around academic excellence. We took the aspirational statement, "We will provide comprehensive, relevant, and rigorous, high-quality, and innovative experiences and environments that inspire and engage learners." And we've made the metrics that support that goal, ensuring that every child has what they need for post-secondary readiness upon graduation in both math and in reading. These particular points of, and goals and metrics align with the state assessment. Now, the state assessment has different, different numbers, but we know, for example, if a student is doing very well on the STAR test, they will also do well on the state assessment. So our overall goal for math and reading, they're, they're defined there, and what our five-year goal will be is eighty percent. And we have a long way to go there. And I know that Gwen is going to show us some specific data and metrics at the end, so I won't go deep into those. And then you'll also see the graduation rate, which is also included on the state assessment, that's on there. The ACT composite is something we always share out with our community as well, and also that we continuously measure and respond to the multi-level systems of support around both behavior and, as well as academics, and we provided a high level of the seventeen, eighteen behavioral data. On the right-hand column, we have not put in the district report card, it's coming out next week, but we continue to make progress, and we're looking forward to sharing that with you and moving that forward. And I think that, I think the graduation rate's on the next one. And there are a couple other highlights there. Oh, the graduation rate isn't on there, because that hasn't been released either, they're coming out from the state. And then the last piece on this particular page, some more graphics in terms of some of the things that we celebrate. Again, we talk about that cohort student rate. If a student comes in as a freshman in any of our high schools, the average and likelihood of graduation is ninety-six point seven percent regardless of life circumstance. This next page really focuses in on the strategic actions and action steps, and so when Mike and Judy start to talk, you'll hear a lot of these different action steps, as well as when Nancy speaks to the work that's going on around academic achievement. So I won't go there. Gave you the breakdown for, and changes in our graduation rates. Obviously, we've done quite well overall. Many of our student groups have seen success in double digits, but we've also seen some declines that causes great concern. And obviously, then it's a high-level need to, to move swiftly into interventions and address it that way. Then you'll see a similar modeling around district priorities and personalized pathways with, again, five-year goals around the, the pathways, and some examples of the pathways and programs we have in place. The actions and strategic actions that are currently going on for those areas as well, highlighting turbocharge and the graduation rates and graduate certifications, or certificates upon graduation and so forth. So you can see those highlights as well. Then there's the district priority around engagement, and we've got the, the metrics through the school climate survey, and also the youth risk behavior survey are some of the metrics we're modeling, or monitoring, I'm sorry. And then the K-12 insight open enrollment survey will also be provided. In addition to that, you'll see that the involvement in co-curriculars data is included, and that's a goal to improve that as well. So again, that's around the, the district priority of engagement in terms of meaningful connections with our families and our community. And then again, strategic actions and action steps, you'll see. District priority around thriving workforce, and again, engagement with overall satisfaction taken from the staff school perception survey. Goal around communication and development and recognition. Safety and staff retention rates are all the areas that our goals are really focused upon within that framework. And then, of course, action steps and strategic action steps once again, so anyone can look and say, well, how are they getting there? What are they doing to get there? What are the specifics? And then those are some highlights in that graphic piece, talking about staff turnover, composite score of employees who participated in the personal health assessment. Ninety-one percent employees report job is personally satisfying, and ninety-eight percent employees report there were contributes to the district's success are some of the highlights included. These are all documents that we will be sharing out with the public, but in the meantime, this isn't the last time you'll see them, and we will invite you, obviously, this is the first time you've seen them. And I think what are the, what the opportunity for us then is to, you know, have further discussion. And are these, these are the goals that we believe best align with the state report card to get us where we need to be. But, and these are the goals that we are, have been looking at and working toward. But obviously, there could be some other things that we haven't included, but we need to just, this is the work we've been working. So the last piece, before I turn it over to John and his team around teaching and learning, is really taking us back to the, the importance of equity being the pathway to proficiency. And our educational learning system is really, are focused on continuous improvement with equity at the center of our work. And each of the components in that, in that circle, you'll start to see, starting with collaboration and high-quality instruction and strategic use of data. You'll hear when our, our team talks, our teaching and learning team, talk about the school's success plans, actually, the district's success plans in both secondary and elementary. The folks that are sitting off to the side here, that don't have a microphone sitting in front of them, we just didn't feel we had hours and hours of time. But next time, we could come back with the research evaluation, success plan, technology success plan, English language success plan, human resource. Each of our departments has a success plan. So as we think about equity is the pathway to proficiency for all students. What are the key components? There are some examples in there that you'll be able to see. Here's what they're doing in this particular area. Here's what we're talking about with high-quality instructional teaching practices, and that really rings true in the presentations. How are they using data? What data should I be monitoring in these various areas and so forth? So as we wrap this, the last page of this particular document that will be posted is around the notion of Through Line Accountability. And as you can see, it is a flow between the goals. It is taking the, the Board of Education's mission and vision and having a clear alignment of accountability from the student all the way through to the Board of Education, that Through Line of Accountability around our four district priorities of academic excellence, personalized pathways, engagement, and thriving workforce. Really looking at those priorities as the levers to the district's mission, vision, and core values, looking at them through, okay, what are our goals? And you see that in the document. And how do they align with the district's goals to make sure that we achieve students' needs, meet their needs, and so forth? So you see that in Through Line Accountability, as, as we say, from the boardroom to the classroom, from the classroom to the boardroom, and, and what happens in between. And that's really what we intend to demonstrate in the next part of our conversation. Before, is there anything for me in this particular document that we need to address right now, or, or shall we keep going? All right. All right, I'm going to turn it over to you, John. Here you go.
All right. And I'll see if this, this mouse works. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. And it does today. So. Okay. Sorry. It's a user error. So as, as Michelle said, we wanted to talk a little bit more about the Through Line of Accountability, and we wanted to find that for the public as well. So when we talk about the Through Line of Accountability, it's a line of accountability focused on increased student achievement, increased success. And it involves district-wide action planning, making sure that we have that clear alignment from what the board sets as a goal, to what the district office is working on, to what the schools are working on, to what the individual classroom teachers are working on, to what results in individual student achievement in the classroom. So those elements are really important, but it's not a single, one-way line of accountability. As you see our arrow there, it runs both ways. So as there are needs in the classroom, those... So as there are needs in the classroom, those need to be addressed by the principal, and then through the, through the school's success plans, we were focusing on them, in addition to the district office support, and they, they focus into shift, shaping and reporting up to the board related to how we're doing with achievement as a whole. So, today, this is going to serve as a template for what we're focusing on. In a, in a way, you could think about this as, if you're on the blue line in, on a railway station, we're going to be taking stops at each point along this line, this through-line of accountability. So first stop is the Board of Education. Looking at Policy 150, thinking about some of the main rules of the Board, what the Board helps us do as an organization is set the vision and set the mission for the course of the district, based on, on feedback from, from the community and your work together as a Board. We, the Board also focuses on structure, thinking about what are the policies of the district, what are the procedures that guide us, and then what are our district goals? And the district goals are laid out in, in the plan that, that Michelle just articulated. But then the other important piece is the accountability, the metrics. How are we going to define success? How are we going to measure success so that we know whether or not we're achieving those goals? And we need to monitor that on a regular basis. This high level of accountability and support around the things that matter are what we need most as, as a district, in any, in any school district, but that is the role of the Board, to hold us accountable for what we say we're going to do. The next stop along the line is district office support. How does the district office support schools and support the Board in meeting those goals? There are three significant elements that we've, we've alluded to already. One is a guaranteed and viable curriculum, making sure, as we say, that, that every student in every classroom has a teacher who is using that curriculum that's been set out by the Board, that's aligned with state and national, national best practices and, and state, state standards, along with our, our curriculum essential documents, to, to make sure that the, the curriculum is guaranteed and viable. That is part of our multi-level systems of support, and we've talked about that before, but defining for the public, what is the multi-level systems of support? It's, it's a, it's, it's a process of being able to provide for every student. The first layer is the universal. What are we doing for all students? And that is something that we focus on improving every day, because the better we make the universal, the, the less we have students that are falling through the cracks and needing something else as far as intervention or additional support. After the universal, if students do struggle, then we have to, we have to put into place interventions at the tier-two and tier-three level, getting more and more intense, more focused on what the needs of the students are. So those are, are another important part. We also have to focus on cultivation of instructional leadership. Instructional leadership is the most important element of district office work in many ways, because if we have goals, but we're not leading properly as, as a team amongst ourselves, and if we're not shaping the leadership and, and coaching the leadership and evaluating and working with our principals and supporting them, we won't have the instructional leadership that we need to shift the system. So that's a second important part in the work we do. And as we said, we also need student data systems for results-oriented decision-making. If we don't know our current reality, and we don't know whether we're achieving progress or if we are having situations in which we're sliding back, if we can't measure that through our data, we can't make informed decisions. So that's a critical part of the district office support as well. And we'll be going into the, the data systems a little bit later with Diane and Gwen. So, before we begin the secondary part, what I want to say is, it, it's important for us to have a cohesive plan at the elementary level and at the secondary level for the key things that we're focusing on. There are a variety of different departments working together, but it's important that our arrows, our intentions, and our work is aligned and interwoven, so that it's complementary to, to each other's work and serving to lift the students together. So, we've worked together to put together a secondary cohesive plan that Dr. Judy Wiegand and Mike Fries will be discussing, and then we'll be talking about our elementary plan. You'll see within it really similar components. You might be thinking, didn't I just see that slide? And that is intentional, because the core practices that are important for our focus at secondary are also critical for our focus at elementary. And then within the elementary portion, you'll also see something pretty exciting, and these are videos of job-embedded coaching. It's, this is the point where adult action changes to better meet the needs of our students. And the critical nature of that, that's, that's where the Board goal turns into a plan, which turns into leadership, which turns into a support, and it's actually changing the practice of the adult and the trajectory of the students in the classroom. So, we have a number of videos that you'll see that are, that are aligned, not only with some of the things we point out in secondary, but really, the fruit of the labor related to elementary. So I'll turn the mic over to Mike and Judy.
It's kind of interesting to be on the side of the table. I kind of want to ask you to present, and then we get to vote on something. That would be kind of great, so.
All right, well, good evening, and as Dr. Langenholt mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, that, and John just referenced as well, is that our work at the secondary level, there's a lot that goes into that, and working with Julie and with Claudia and all the other different departments, but for tonight's presentation, we're really going to take a focus on those teaching and learning core practices. And for us at the secondary level, we're going to take a look at three specific areas. And I will say that the components that we're going to talk about are present in our system, but really, our work is on clarifying those systems and then building the capacity in order to have sustainability, because our effectiveness and success is connected to how we organize the work that we're asking people to carry out. So again, these three areas are all interrelated, but let's start with, what do we mean when we say that we need a guaranteed and viable curriculum? I'm going to have Mike touch on that part.
Right, and so, we're going to offer an opportunity to clarify some of the specifics again, and, and remind you of what we mean when we talk about these components, and also then clarifying specifically how we are monitoring them at the secondary level, so that the metrics that are being followed and, and addressed annually or semi-annually or based on the schedule that's been announced, how those, those actions on our end and, in conjunction with site-based leadership, really, it comes to life. We've, pretty much every month, it seems, there's a governance request relative to a course or curriculum change or addition or new piece relative to our curriculum cycle, and we maintain an emphasis on what we call guaranteed and viable curriculum as an approach. The course essential documents that we've always brought forward to you are intended to be the referenced, written, published, and adopted curriculum of the district, and we recognize that each site is unique. It's unique in the sense that there may be a particular personalized approach or customization or emphasis at that site, but we have to be able to guarantee that if you take a class called, let's say, geometry, no matter what school you're taking it in, or what environment you're taking it in our district, you will learn the essential outcomes so that you are proficient in geometry and what that pertains to. So we've worked very hard with our staff to create those, and, and request your approval of those curriculum or content essential documents. And then, the way that we would be monitoring or measuring that and, and really shining a light in particular, this particular year as part of this plan that we talk about tonight, would be, for instance, in our written lesson plans, and working with principals and teachers to ensure that there's a direct reflection to the district-approved adopted curriculum in, in their lesson plans. And that's, that's connected through, for instance, our supervision evaluation model, Domain One, the preparation and planning piece. So there should be a, when we say like a through-line of accountability, that would be one specific example of how that could be monitored, or rather, will be monitored and supported. Really, we believe that, as a district, that having a guaranteed viable curriculum is one of the ways that we meet not only our mission and vision as a district, but one of our fundamental core values of, of equity. It's a matter of equity that all of our students have an opportunity to access our adopted universal curriculum expectations. So, Judy, any other areas or ways that we're going to be supporting and monitoring that aspect?
Well, Mike, yes, there are. Thank you for asking. So smooth, right? As Mike mentioned, when it comes to having, we have great documents, curriculum documents, but what does that mean out in, in practice? And as he said, you know, taking a look and working with our principals regarding lesson plans, and are we following our curriculum? And it is a matter of equity, because if you're going to take a geometry course at West, it should be the same, you should be exposed to the same curriculum at Southwest and so forth, so there has to be that consistency in our district. I will also say it's a matter of equity when we take a look and monitor when it comes to access and outcomes for students in advanced placement, international, baccalaureate, and dual credit, working in a diverse community, diverse student body, I think it's, it's imperative that we do monitor that as well. So taking a look at those enrollment numbers, as I said, access, but also the outcomes. What does the grade rate distribution look like? So, another way we monitor is through our grades, which leads to another piece, we talk about assessment, and we use a lot of educational jargon, so I'm going to try to make this as non-jargony as possible. So we talk about high-quality formative assessments, and we use that word assessment a lot. So, in a balanced assessment framework, you certainly have those, as we referenced earlier, outward-facing measures such as ACT, the STAR, the Forward Exam. But what about those common district assessments? And how do we use those to help improve instruction? So let's say I am a student, or I'm teaching algebra, let's say, and we have unit assessments for, in all our core areas. So after that first unit in algebra, having the teachers come together in their collaborative learning teams, taking a look at those common assessment results, and taking a look at seeing which standards the students do well on, where are our students struggling, and then talking about those instructional practices that can then help address those areas that maybe our students are struggling in. So again, I think it's very important, we take a look at that assessment framework, that it's a balance. It's not just about standardized assessments, but really working with our faculty and staff as to, how are you using district common assessments to help guide your instruction as well?
To that, to that point, it's really, in some cases, it's, it's sometimes less about the actual assessment, and really, it's about our assessment practices, okay? Understanding why we are assessing and the design of the assessment, how it will then result in what we would refer to sometimes as feedback, or in some cases, feed-forward. There's an acronym that we sometimes refer to relative to our beliefs around this, and that would be acronym of FAST, that, that feedback from an assessment practices standpoint needs to be frequent, it needs to be accurate, it needs to be specific, it needs to be timely. Because we're part of a, a teaching and learning environment and community in the classroom where the adult can't be keeping the communication secret from the student about where they are as a learner. Likewise, the student shouldn't be holding on privately to what they know and can do, and so there's a big surprise at the end in a summative, high-stakes environment. Rather, assessment as part of the learning process. So it's really about assessment practices as much as it would be about any given particular test, let's say, or assessment performance task. Our expectation, both at the universal level, meaning in the core curriculum environment, as well as in our second or third tier of intervention, be it math, literacy, behavior, is that we're using assessment practices that are informing our next steps. It's very critical that we're collecting information and communicating with each other, and then monitoring so that we can properly support progress in those environments. And so specifically, we've asked that principals are meeting monthly with their interventionists to go over the status of student progress, because the opportunity to participate in math or literacy intervention, for instance, is not intended to be a lifelong commitment, is intended to accelerate growth so that the student is able to achieve grade-level proficiency and can then move forward without the need of the additional supplementary intervention that may be present, which really ties into an overall process related to coaching and supporting effective educators.
That's right, because our work, we're a people business, and the most important position in the district, or the most important thing that happens in the district is what happens day in and day out in that classroom between the teacher and the student. So how are we then helping to support, coach, and develop and support effective educators? And our, our focus, of course, is, should be job-embedded and ongoing when it comes to our professional learning. So our professional development sessions at the building certainly have a focus on high-leverage instructional practices. We take a look at that academic press. Do we have the rigor in all our courses, whether it's Bloom's Taxonomy or Depth of Knowledge, whatever framework we want to use? But again, do we have that rigor? As well as taking a look at ongoing professional development in a variety of different areas. And one piece that I've been quite impressed with is some of the work that Mike and his teams are doing right now with our math department, and being able to provide teachers the opportunity to go and observe one another, whether that is in your own building or across the district. There's a wealth of knowledge here in our district, but do we take the time to provide those opportunities for our faculty and staff? And I know Mike has a few other areas that he'd like to highlight.
It really is reflective of our belief system as an organization, based on board policy, past and continued and future practice, that you'll see examples of in video form in a few minutes, but the idea that professional learning as part of being a professional educator means you're part of a professional learning community, a community of learners, just as students are learners, adults are learners. And so emphasizing, whenever possible, job-embedded and ongoing, sustainable professional learning opportunities. This year in particular, specifically, we know that in our secondary buildings, educators are able to engage in reflective practice, not only through their development of a professional practice goal and their student learning objectives, but buildings are emphasizing strategies that include self, and I apologize for reading off my sheet here, but there, there is a plethora of them, or there's many of them. So self-video analysis, so video as part of a reflective and coaching process, engaging in coaching cycles, both formally within the literacy coaching framework, as well as more informally, as, as part of their collaborative learning team, engaging in peer observations, school visits, both of their partners, their colleagues across the district teaching the same courses, but as well as, hey, what's happening in elementary? Hey, what's happening in high school? Hey, what's happening in middle school? So they can see students that will be coming to them, or where the students are going after they're with them. Engaging in professional learning activities such as lesson studies, where they collaboratively plan a lesson, and then they, they, you know, hey, it's your turn to take it this time, and we'll observe it, and we'll reflect on how that works. Or what is known as a critical friends group, where, for instance, I teach my lesson, I tell you how I taught it, what I did, and then you, as my colleagues, provide critical feedback as to, did you try this? What if you tried that? How about this? As part of a job-embedded collaborative learning team process. It's very important that our specialists, whether they be interventionists or coaches, program support teachers, or the like, that they have the opportunity to have inner-rated reliability. So just like students should have, like, geometry should be geometry, should be geometry in terms of course outcomes, our specialists should be able to, regardless of what school they're serving in, they should, they should be reliable among each other, and the only way we can do that is if we maintain our commitment to professional learning communities and collaborating together, and making sure that our school calendar, our school schedule, our planning for that takes place to support that, that intentional effort. We also have, and finally, finally relative to this, we have ongoing literacy coach professional learning in, in the middle school level, as well as, you know, pre-K eight. We have a middle school district literacy leadership cohort that meets on a regular basis. We have a middle and high school math leadership cohort that meets. We also have interventionists participating in cohort-based professional learning sessions focused on further implementation of their interventions, but also understanding the MLSS process. All of those things I specifically mentioned are things that are being monitored and supported so that the strategic actions that are outlined result in positive trajectory of the metrics that have been indicated.
So again, these are just some of the key highlights of the work that we're doing, and again, as referenced already earlier, that there's certainly this alignment with what's happening at the elementary level, so at this point, we're going to turn it over to our elementary colleagues.
Thank you very much, and thank you. I would like to first begin by simply saying there's so much congruency and coherency between the elementary and the high school and middle school, that we're not, we're going to really not be redundant tonight, but to take our practices, much of what they spoke of, and bring it out in some video clips of that in action at the elementary level. The very first video clip that we've prepared for you tonight is actually a couple of different pieces. Well, I guess you want me to talk about culturally relevant curriculum, instruction, and also the assessment practices. and also the assessment practices. You'll find in every one of these video clips that we have presented for you tonight. So please be looking for the high-leverage moves from elementary education, which not only viable curriculum and guaranteed, but we've taken it with their adoption of our resources over the last four years to that culturally relevant, barrier-free, access for all students. How do we meet all students in the continuum of learning in a learning environment? We're going to show you some of that tonight. There we go. This first, before we hit the clip, I first want to set the stage that in the background in this, we had talked about embedded professional learning. We talked about instructional leadership, and the training or the principals as the instructional leaders of schools. In the background in this video, you'll briefly see a bunch of our, at least 10 of our elementary principals. This was actually a professional development opportunity for them to observe our new resource. The facilitator in this resource is one of the, in the clip, the teacher in the clip is actually one of our, the writers of the Bridges in Mathematics, and has practiced this for 40 years, actually demonstrating best practice and instruction through bridges with the observation of our building principals. Then our building principals met pre-conference, observed, and then had a post-conference where we, we held discussion about what we noticed in instruction, and then the building principals will build a professional development opportunity and take it back to their schools, and lead that professional opportunity for their schools. The other piece, the very first part, because this is a 33-minute clip that we've cut down to four minutes for you, I knew you, I knew I'd get your attention. And the very first part, you'll notice that they set the stage for mathematical learning. Please note, take notice of the specific language that's being used. In the second part of the clip where they go into Bridges in Mathematics, you'll see that algebraic thinking, and that is a strand that goes all the way through our pre-K five Bridges curriculum. And then you'll notice that it's one of the strategies that we work with first graders on is counting on, so they are not counting from one, always going back and counting from one. They see a set of numbers and count on from that set of numbers. You'll notice that. And then in the workplaces, that will be the very last component of this video, the workplaces is where they take that mini lesson that they practice together with the teacher, and they, they actually go back and they have differentiated workplaces where students can demonstrate the strategies and skills in their learning. So you'll see two workplaces, and I will be able to point out the difference between the two, because there is a significant difference, but it's very important to know that you can have a gifted learner, of course, all our children are gifted, you could have a high-achieving student, and you could have a student that is, that is embedded into the, or comes to the, into the classroom for their direct instruction, or for their instruction in mathematics from other departments in the district. So if we could please start, I'd appreciate that, if you're going to click it to start.
Good start. All right. Right now, you're sitting in the area of your log. What I'd like you to do is stand up and make, sit around the perimeter of your log.
I just don't pretend I just can't read. First grade, I'm sorry.
You're thinking, that number comes after 30. Think privately. Give me the signal when you're ready. Whisper to your neighbor, what do you think the number is?
Thirty-one.
Stage whisper.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-eight.
Wait, wait.
Okay, ready, all right.
I thought there wasn't, there wasn't one, there wasn't two, or three, or four.
What number did this thing start with?
It started with a six.
It did, let's count, the number's down here, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
I went through one.
I went through, oh, good one. What'd you get? How many on this side?
I got seven.
Okay, how many on this side?
Five.
Five, and two more. Is there a seven on the game board?
Yeah.
So they're playing against the teacher, and this is what is in all of the lessons, where the children play the game against the teacher.
Six. How did you know you had six so fast?
I got this one, six.
Let's take that, let's take that. Nice job, you're using the counting-on strategy. Jacob, would you like to add another two to the student's stack? Yes, she was ready, a lot more than me. So Kayden, can you get up here? He's going to grab the domino, let's see. It's hard, you're wishing I had your vision, huh, friend?
I wish we had both of that.
No, no, let Kayden have a turn. Just quickly, one, two, that's a good one. Okay, one more. You got it. Hey, what did you get?
Nine.
I went through three, nine.
You saw her, he used his extension, he has five, let's count on, six, six, seven, eight, nine, okay.
So the teacher also models for the students, and now you'll see this carried over to the workplaces, and typically the children play this then again independently.
Okay, Jerry, it's your turn. Did you get a girl or two, Emerson? Okay, your turn, Jerry. Thanks for being a fair say. Okay, Emerson, your turn.
This workplace is what we call, have five frames, and two five frames make 10. So the students are still working on counting-on skills, but this particular child is at the stage of visual memorization, making that visual image, that conceptual understanding of what eight looks like, what nine looks like. And after Pia was done, she invited me over, and the student explained to me, I asked, how did you know that that was seven? And out of, out of the 10, it's, well, because there are three, there are three that don't have dots on them. So they, he was beginning to make that visual memory and imagery of what seven looks like. So those are the foundational skills that we'll build on, and then the child will learn to count on having that visual memory, looking at a set of numbers of dominos, knowing that the five, the five dots, and then adding on. So those are, you're counting-on strategies, and I won't get into all the developmental pieces going on here. But you can see the culturally sensitive opportunity, there were other workplaces going on that I didn't include in this for you tonight, but certainly if you're interested, we could, we could have a video party. And then we also have, the next piece that I'd like to show you, Judy and Mike referenced, that embedded professional learning, that coaching model. And for the past four years, we have come in front of the board, and you so graciously have supported an embedded coaching framework, and that is professional development. A coaching model in a district is embedded professional development. Every day, our teachers have an opportunity to learn from each other. In this particular clip, I would appreciate it if we could notice how the formative assessment, and Judy and Mike referenced formative assessments, those are the assessments that the teachers will take that actually inform their next instructional decisions. You'll notice that we have Amy Phillips and Ms. Upstone in our conference, and what we're going to be looking for here are a couple pieces, looking for how they use the formative assessments to plan instruction. And then, if you could please, just jot down what you might capture out of here, is what you think the teacher in the mini lesson is going to be teaching from this conference, okay?
So we just recently finished Ben Two, and we collected some writing samples. Let's look to see how the students are doing and where our next steps will be for instruction. What are you noticing?
One of the things I noticed that I was really pleased with was in the beginning of their nomination letters, they're remembering to write the title of the book, and they're capitalizing it and underlining it, like we had taught in a previous lesson. They're also doing a really nice job of giving evidence right from the text. In some places, they're actually using quotes right from the book, like we talked about one of our lessons, so they're doing a nice job with that. So the middle of their letters are something really good. They're using a lot of reason, and a lot of evidence from the book. It's the beginning of their letters, that they just sort of jump right into, this book should win an award, and here's why, but they don't really, they're not setting it up very much, I don't think, or much of introduction.
Okay. And I noticed that that's one of the lessons that's coming up here, so is that where you're thinking of going next?
Yeah, I think that's definitely the next thing that they need to work on, kind of adding some stuff.
And this lesson has introductions and conclusions, what are your thoughts about them being able to handle both of those in one lesson?
I would separate those into two different lessons. I think that, I don't know, I just think that this group is going to be a little bit too overwhelming to work, to revise an introduction and a conclusion. I think it would make more sense to focus on the introduction, and really get the pieces in, and then the next day, if they take that on right away, the next day to go into their conclusions. And then you can kind of build on their conclusion and talk about how it mirrors the introduction, but I like the idea of teaching them separately.
I like that idea too, I agree with it maybe, too. I think that when you really look at the different components of what's expected for the introduction, I think that that's plenty of learning for them in one mini lesson.
All right, I think you're right on target there. All right, perfect, guys.
Okay, notice, and I probably should have brought this out, and we can watch this again at a different time, and we have several clips of good coaching. Notice the coach's language, wasn't telling the teacher what to do, but having a collegial conversation around that, what that student data was saying, and what might be potential next steps for the, for the teacher to teach for. And it's a collegial conversation, it's a share, whatever that teacher had determined they, what they wanted to teach next would be where the coach would go with that teacher. And then the results would be in the post-conference, in reviewing what the learning, happened as a result of the learning, so that reflective practicing. So in the next piece, this is a mini lesson. Does anybody want to take a stab at what the teaching point might be in the meeting mini lesson after the, after the teacher and coach's conversation?
Introductions.
Okay. Let's see if he's right. Roll it.
All right, boys and girls, you've been doing a really nice job with your nomination letters. I think you have two or three of them, show me with your fingers how many you have done, or how many you are working on, what kind of, what kind of letters working on, I'm working on. Okay? We talked about some things with them on our white chart up on the easel. We know that in our opinion writing, we have to introduce the book, we have to write our opinion, we have to give reasons. We've been working this week on doing some extra things that really make our opinions stronger, like putting exact quotes from your text, from the book, right into your, you know, to your nomination letters. You've also been working on making comparisons, and I know that a lot of you were able to do that pretty easily. And then yesterday, we talked about using different punctuation to kind of slow our reader down, and almost give them a little bit of suspense. Today, I'm going to teach you another thing that you can add to your nomination letters to really grab your reader. An introduction, that's what we want to write, and that's what we're going to work on today. We're going to start another nomination letter, and look at what that person did to make a really good introduction, because we really want to grab our reader's attention right away. Introduction. So I want to read it while I'm reading it, and I want you to think about what this author put in her nomination letter, or his, I actually don't remember who wrote it, to make it a really good introduction. Best Friends Don't Have to Be Just alike Award. She is such a nice girl, you should be friends. Parents are always saying that, but who else can be friends with someone your parents choose for you? Yuck. Well, that is just how Bean feels at the beginning of this picture-third chapter book that is perfect for second graders. Ivy Bean, written by Annie Barrows, and illustrated by Sophie Blackwell, should get the Best Friends Don't Have to Be Just alike Award.
So we see the conditions for learning and acceptance, review of the lesson, high-quality instruction.
You can definitely tell that. I want you right now to turn and talk about what was in that introduction that made it so good?
This is critical in all of our areas of instruction, both math and literacy, where children have the opportunity to share what they're thinking at that time, turn and talk to their friend, the teacher then drops in.
So, which one thing you guys saw? Bold words, how many of you, you or your partner talked about that, the bold words? She used a couple of them, and I call that on here, I go pop-out words, because sometimes they're not always bold. I, what else can our introductions have? Jordan?
This book would be good for second graders.
We call it, we call it a suggestion. That's exactly what I was thinking, too. It's a suggestion, it's not saying you are required to read this, but it's suggesting, like, well, this would be really good for second graders, so we can put a suggestion in our introduction. You guys found all of the things that I found when I was studying this piece of writing. Introductions can have pop-out words, quotes, sneak peek, title and author, and others later. Suggestions, questions, punctuation, and an award name, not your own. I want to revise my introduction, they'll know that you helped with that. So, I went back to one of my award, my nomination letters, or the, I think last week, Desbro. But I'm wanting to think as in reading which one of these things would make sense to add, maybe one, maybe two. All right, so here we go. The Mouse in Shining Armor Award. The town Desbro deserves to win an award for the Mouse in Shining Armor. This book is fantastic. The main character, Desbro, is a sweet little mouse who decides that it's up to him to save the Princess Pete. I'm going to put this up here, I want you to turn and talk to your neighbor. What could I add? Can you think of how you would say it? And how would I write that?
So the teacher's actually teaching strategic action and strategies to use as a writer that they can carry over multiple genres, but not teaching to what we call an assessment piece, or a particular piece of writing.
What school is this, Nancy?
You think they were fantastic, should be a pop-out word? Should I bold it, squiggly market? What do you, how would you do it if you were me? Kind of those squigglies? I'm going to use a sticky note for that, because I see that I have space to just write it up here. So what, what of these would that be? And you're saying it would be good for a fourth grader, because they're like adventures? That's a suggestion, and I heard Brandon and Olivia were both talking about that, and they said, well, you might as well recommend it to other elementary kids, might be right through second graders, treat it one, and if they like adventure. So I'm going to think about where I'd put that. Desbro, the third graders and up, who love adventure books. Good suggestion, let's take one more. All right, I know you have more suggestions, but I want you to have time to do this with your own writing. When you are working on your nomination letters today.
They go from shared writing now to independent writing.
You might be writing a comparison, you might be finding quotes, you might be adding some punctuation, using evidence, you're doing all the things that we've been learning about how to write a really good opinion letter, and now today you have a whole new f-. And now today you have a whole new thing that you can try, adding an introduction. How many of you think that you are going to be able to do this? You're going to be able to read your letter and think, oh, yep, I could easily add an author, pop-out words. All right. That's going to make your letters a lot stronger. Okay, and then maybe the judges will choose your book.
So thank you for your patience in watching a seven-minute mini lesson, but we often use this language in board meetings. We'll say, well, they have a mini lesson and what do they learn in the mini lesson? You can see the explicit teaching and the points that the teacher was teaching for. And then the next piece, and it's not nearly as long, but when they go to independent writing, now this is where the personalized education piece comes in. The teacher conferences with each child. And what it was taught in the mini lesson isn't necessarily what's going to be conference with, with the child. Just as the teacher owned the conversation with the coach and where they desire to go next, the student, please notice how the student owns the conversation with the teacher and shares with the teacher where they'd like to go next. This is a very highly qualified teacher as they scaffold the student through the learning process. If you roll it, please. So please look for how she supports the writer.
You're working on your nomination for that work with this. What part of your nomination letter are you working on today?
I'm trying to work on the period and explanation, like punctuation.
So is that what you like a little hopla? Some of the punctuation?
So she's not telling him what to work on.
That you want me to look at? Or should we just go through one page at a time and kind of get started? So why don't you read the first page to me and I'll kind of look at it while you're reading it?
And then you'll notice in just one moment, the formative assessment that the teacher is taking on the child to know exactly what was, what the child knew and where the child would go, where the teacher would go next with instruction. And then we can stop the video right after they see that formative assessment. So when we speak of formative assessments and these anecdotal notes, when we come to board meetings and, and present our literacy framework in typically July, um, this, this is an example of what those formative assessments and how well our teachers know our learners.
Yeah, so let's go through and check that. Every time, every time you say Jada has to capitalize and every time Annie has to be capitalized. Now, we also talked earlier this week or last week.
So the notes that she has in front of her is where she's, um, anecdotal notes that she's taken. For sake of time, we can go ahead and cut.
Nancy, did you also want to elaborate briefly on the fact that, I think it has something very important there when you said that the, the formative assessment piece related to knowing the student and how it's about teaching the writer versus teaching writing, if you will, or teaching writing assignments, you're teaching the writer?
Well, as we all learn to write, I'm sure, we were taught how to write to a piece of writing, a particular genre of writing. In our model, what we do is we actually teach children strategies for writing so that it's in their repertoire or in their toolbox when they're on their own and writing on their own. If we have it so tight that we're teaching step-by-step assignment writing, as we used to call it, then students learn a process or procedure, much like carry that over to math and we've moved away from procedurally learning mathematics. But having a conceptual understanding of how writing works and the art of writing. And so these students actually come out of their elementary experience with a repertoire of writing strategies that they can apply across multiple genres. Capitalization, you can, if we had more time, we could probably go through all that was learned in that mini lesson and then carried over to that conference. Good? Is that what you were asking for, Mark?
Yes, and I think as we go through each of the videos, it's, it's, Nancy's articulating how it aligns to the different, different elements within the elementary plan. So, and really, the, the same type of practice is occurring at secondary as well. This is, the reason why we're going as deeply with this particular piece is when we talk about job-embedded professional learning, what, what does that mean? It sounds, sounds like an odd thing. But it means that rather than just going to a conference and, and learning an idea and coming back and having a new dusty binder, it's, it's applying the learning with feedback in a very similar fashion to what we see the teacher doing with the students in the classroom. So, so they're, they're kind of microcosm, the classroom is a microcosm of the type of professional development we try to provide for, for our adult learners as, as teachers and, and also for our principals and, and for ourselves.
Absolutely.
And a key point of the elementary strategic plan is really a focus on phonemic awareness. And I think the next slide articulate, or the next set articulate that very well.
Thank you. We've had a core group of professionals working on a phonemic awareness project since um, last March, February or March, where we actually reviewed some of the district data and knowing that our children from pre-k are coming into our kindergarten classrooms with quite a wide gap. And to close that gap, we wanted to really focus in on um, phonemic awareness, primarily in observing our instruction, our classroom instruction and resources didn't support that scope and sequence at this time. Um, it's very difficult to identify the letter ID or the sound to letter, which we know are so critically important in an emergent um, reader. And so this task, we have a task and we have been reviewing, we reviewed several different phonological awareness um, programs and then narrowed it down to two in which we currently have seven different teachers or seven different schools, um, pre-k teachers that are actually piloting um, two, our two finalists, shall I say, that we're going to go then deeper. When we first started out, we had a set of questions that we really wanted to answer and having gone through just this piece of a field test, it has so broadened our, um, shall I say, our, our awareness to what more we really need to have or what we do, we do have in place, but we have to make sure that we add an additional two. So, and in addition to. So the very first piece, um, I was asked, and I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to share with you just a glimpse of the two different phonemic awareness um, resources that we are currently looking at um, in our pre-k program. So if you please click on Mrs. Becker's first. This is zoophonics. The, the piece about zoophonics that we are really impressed with is that it's the lowercase. Um, ninety percent of it is the lowercase letter and sounds right away in the teaching. Where in many of the other programs we looked at, we, the, the uppercase and lowercase letters are taught together and the sound is more of the sounds in the room or hearing sounds, but not sound to letter identification in relationships. I hope we can hear this, but if we can't, you'll get the. So you're noticing that the student, the teacher is having the student say the message. The student's going to have to hold the message in their head. Memory is so important, so we're developing memory at this part. And then the student will use oral language to tell the teacher back the message. All right, I apologize for the volume. So you notice the teacher parsing the words and having the students have the opportunity to hear the message several times. Students typically need to hear it a hundred and eighteen times before it becomes they own it and it's in long-term memory. And you'll see the multiple sensory approach that she uses to repeat the same message.
And these are four-year-olds.
These are four-year-old children.
Adults also learn well doing that too.
It's an amazing four-years-old. So the teacher now is really modeling how spoken word becomes written word and how students can use phonemic awareness, a spoken sound to print. So print, once the message print is printed, they know that that message is at last. It's there always. There's an enormous amount of developmental teaching that's going on in here. Just the construction, the structure, the sentence structure. So in this, in this particular piece, they have little puppets that make sounds in the animals and the students learn how the animal, the sound goes with the animal, like p-p-penguin. So they have that sound. They also um, teach the letter shapes with the animal and then they transpose the um, lowercase letter over the animal and then the animal disappears after the student has made letter identification and sound to that letter. So that's one of the pieces that we're looking at. Uh, the next piece is, we won't play the whole piece because you'll get the essence of this. Um, we were, we had to clip the one that we had because we had some privacy violations in it, so we, we didn't, we couldn't show it tonight.
Just one of the students.
Yes, the student couldn't be recorded and we caught it at the last minute is what I meant. Um, yeah, everyone else is, is good to go. So we, we did recapture this, this, uh, yesterday in Mrs. Smith's, uh, Smith's class. And um, in this particular happily ever after, far more traditional approach to teaching phonemic awareness. Um, you're going to be able to um, see the vocabulary development as they discuss story words. Um, also there's comprehension that's being built here with the use and prior knowledge and listening for purpose, determining important ideas, drawing conclusions, answering questions and so on and so forth. So for time's sake, if we could just roll it, you'll get the essence of the difference of the programs. So the teacher will go on and tell the story and then we'll go where the red bear, you know, the father, the papa bear, mama bear, baby bear, you know, the, the story. So we, we don't have to go um, right into this. The teacher constructed that message. Um, it's part of the program. She constructed the message. It wasn't a shared construction with, of that message with the student. There is a lot of foundational skills that are in this program, following directions, right to left, so on and so forth. Like I mentioned, comprehension, but it's um, not as interactive, shall I say inactive, as the zoophonics. Does anyone before we move forward with the timeline and then I would be, I'll be finished with my part here tonight, uh, have any questions about either one of these programs or resources that we're currently in the process of reviewing?
I don't have a question, Nancy, but I, I have a second grader and a fifth grader. And um, I love seeing the bridges because my children love it. They love the games. And they're coming home and they want to play the games at home and my second grader wants to do the, my fifth graders' games. Um, and um, when I was in and I did the teacher, the, the, they're at Aldo, so we do the student conference. And um, it, it's just, it's exciting to hear how she's able to differentiate with having the different kids where they're playing the games. Um, so it's, it's, I'm seeing this in my house. I just want you to know and the kids are loving it.
That's exciting. Thank you for that feedback.
Brenda and Lauren and I had the opportunity to see zoophonics in action, both in English and Spanish on Monday. So if any of the rest of you want to do that, it's, it's a hoot.
And you, you all are very welcome. And Linda Teskey would be more than happy to um, you know, host you in visiting the classrooms and setting those up for you. And I know um, Dr. Warren will help. She's been helping in a part of our core team in this process. We don't want to leave that out. Um, that we are working collaboratively amongst many departments um, to make sure we choose the right resource to close those gaps of our children coming into kindergarten. So this is one of our proactive steps. A little bit about our timeline. Um, we're going to be hopefully moving forward with this project um, a little bit faster than we anticipated. We'll be looking at, uh, we had our summer training with the pilot, with the field testing folks. Uh, in October, uh, we had our literacy coaches from across the district go in and actually take um, reading, uh, early um, reading surveys of all of our children. So we have baseline students that are not in either one of these programs as well as the students in the program. November, December would be our observation period. We're right there. And in January and February, the pilot schools will be presenting during the pre-k professional development to their peers, the two different uh, resources, and then um, making a recommendation or we'll be bringing in the teacher voice as to which of the two resources that they would more favorably want to be a part of. And then we will be coming to the board, um, hopefully the, in February um, with a recommendation of an adoption for our, this part of our pre-k program.
So thinking about how this, this links together, uh, before, before we go into this, but that, that's okay there. Um, when we think about our strategic plan for elementary and when we think about our strategic plan for secondary, it's split into three areas, very similar to, and using really the similar and almost the same template to the school success plan. The three areas are literacy, math, and climate and culture. So when we, when we look at where we are, when we assess our current standing, when we look at um, what is our current reality of instruction related to literacy and we look at where our vision state is, we have to do deep problem analysis to determine what's the next thing we need to focus on. So in the area of literacy is an example. We know that we want to make sure that we're addressing phonemic awareness. We want to make sure that, that we're, we're providing universal phonemic awareness for all students. And then we're also able to identify students who might be struggling with, with other things like dyslexia and be able to provide even deeper intervention for those students. So really, this is, this is, the, the, the strategic actions within each of those areas, literacy, math, and climate and culture are seen as what's the next edge of growth for the organization at the elementary level and at the secondary level. So, uh, for example, with, with the work at secondary, we were talking about uh, use of common formative assessments. We have the system in place. We have knowledge. We have pockets of, of good practice. But we know if we're going to take learning to the next level for secondary, we have to focus deeply on uh, raising the level of practice. And when we look at uh, the, the growth of our, our instructional leaders, that's really the next step. So if we've produced these plans, what does it look like when, when we're, we're expecting them to be implemented with fidelity and we're supporting the principles and what they, they need to do? And I'm sure uh, maybe Ed is a former principal, might be thinking, well, where are these ideas and plans coming from? Part of it is from the data, uh, the data that we've used in looking at problem analysis and looking where uh, the, the edge of growth is. But a lot of it is also coming from the principals. It was interesting, when we worked with the principals this past spring, as we're outlining what are our key strategic action areas, we had in our mind. we had in our mind a set of, what, four, four or five different steps within, and we asked the principals at the elementary level, at the early elementary level, what is it that you feel you need to focus on next? What's your next edge of growth with your teachers, and what do you want us to support you on? These are the thing, they matched. What they said they wanted to focus on was what we hoped they wanted us to focus on, and, and so that there was a, a clear alignment there. We are doing similar work with secondary. There, there's probably a little, a little more work to do at secondary, partly because the nature of secondary is, is different than elementary. As an elementary teacher, you're, to a degree, a, a, a jack-of-all-trade and a master of all trades related to literacy and math and the core, core subject areas, as well as making sure that you're getting in physical activity and, and thinking about the whole child. At secondary, we have a wider variety of subjects, and so, and, and the, the subject areas, expertise of the principal, it can become split if we're not careful. So identifying those, those core areas, those focus areas, it's important for us to, to make sure that we're, we're including everybody. And Christina asked a really important question, I think, when we were looking at measures of success for our AIR project and what we're doing with Washington. And if we're just doing literacy and math, how are we making sure every person is included? Particularly at secondary where we have a wider variety of subjects. And that's why the identify, identification of broader areas and the support of those broader areas within these plans was so important. So what does that have to, what does that look like when we try to do the work, not when we try to do the work, when we do the work within our schools? We are responsible for, with the principals, co-creating personal professional learning and growth, student achievement and focus through the use of data, high-performing collaborative teams, and performance evaluation feedback systems with our principal. That first one, the, the personal and professional learning and growth, just like when we saw the teacher working with the individual students, and the, the teacher and the student decided what was the next edge of growth? What are we going to work on? That's the work that we're doing with our principal supervisors, our directors of elementary and, and secondary, in our work with SEL. They do problem identification and create a professional learning and growth plan for that principal. And as we're seeing this, I, I asked Andrea, could you, could you articulate a little bit about what your work with a particular focus area principal looks like? Not necessarily naming the, the principal and the school, but what, what does it look like when you're working with, with a principal on their edge of growth?
Thank you, John. So as executive directors of schools, it's really important that we have opportunities where we're working side by side with our principals. And we know that school leaders, effective school leaders cultivate very intentional systems for not only growth for their, themselves, but growth for the teams that they lead. Nancy did a beautiful job of illustrating for you the universal curriculum, looking at how we use assessment when we, and job-embedded professional learning when we're working with our staff. One of the things that we really look at is, how does the principal provide formative feedback during the supervision and evaluation model? Because valuation is just a very small part at the end when you're actually filling out the documentation of where the competencies are of that leader. The supervision part is all the coaching, all the support that you're giving along the way. So the principal that I was working with identified as a problem of practice that she wanted to be able to be more skillful in giving very intentional, formative feedback to her bilingual teachers. So her problem of practice, when we looked at the data, was that she felt like she didn't have enough information, enough professional growth herself in what it was that was happening in the bilingual classroom when it came to literacy processing. She wanted to be able to make the transfer of what she's seeing in English-only classrooms into the Spanish instruction, and be able to really observe and then give feedback. So through looking at the data, we, the two of us together started to do some side-by-side walkthroughs of classrooms, the bilingual classrooms. We then brought in Claudia Orr, the Associate Director of Bilingual Education, and used her as a resource so that the two of us, both the principal and myself, could learn more about what are the look-for's? What are the things that we should be seeing while children are transferring Spanish into the English? And it really came down that through that opportunity to really learn together, that we really found out that we needed to learn more about what are the components? What are the instructional practices that we should be seeing in bilingual classroom that would be transferring into what is called English Language Development Time? So we, it's ongoing work, we started last spring. Together, we're taking out a lot of learning around word study and then readers, writers workshops, so that we have a better understanding of literacy processing, those three areas. I know that Ann also is working with an elementary principal.
Yeah, the principal that I'm working with, we, 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 we went through and talked about leadership, and where do you feel, where, where is your next edge of growth? And what, and what are you looking for? And we really talked a lot about the fact that our principals are the instructional leaders for Bridges Math. And it's difficult to be an instructional leader if you don't know the curriculum and if you don't know what needs to be taught. So the work that we're doing, and Nancy's been side by side with us on this, John was with us today, is to really dig into Bridges. And we are, we are starting with understanding the curriculum, and we're starting at fifth grade. And we're working our way back. We are doing a cycle of inquiry, we're going to be working with fifth grade from now until Christmas. We had just the most incredible professional learning today. It was, it was, it was just, the principal did such a wonderful job. But the video that you saw of Pia teaching for Bridges, we had one that, from, what's, what school?
King.
That was King. And when the principal talked to me, he said, you know, I, I'm just not seeing the teachers do the things that I, I saw Pia do. So today, we had a professional learning where he queued up the video, and it was simply, tell me what you're noticing, what do you notice? And so the first five minutes, they watched the video of Pia teaching, and they, then he stopped it, and we, they just talked about what they noticed. And what they noticed was exactly what he was wanting them to notice. It was like it was scripted. And then after that, he said, now, that's what you noticed? Now, as we watch this video, please keep track of how often these things are happening. And so then that was the next part. So it was just such a wonder, it was just incredible, because he was able to, he was able to be that side-by-side learner, take what, that embedded professional learning that we did with Pia, that we all did.
Yes.
And, and be able to work with his teachers on it. And then we debriefed this afternoon, John was able to be there with me. And he, and the principal said, gosh, I walked past a second-grade classroom, and the teacher was doing exactly what we had talked about. She was on the floor with the students, the students were turning and talking, they were thinking inside their head, they were reporting out what the other person had said. So he was able to see the immediate results of that professional development that he led today, it was his leadership, he developed the, the agenda, and, and now we know our next steps, and that will be, and he let the teachers know, my next steps will be coming in and be looking for this. He'll now create a document to do that. So just, just a really incredible experience of, of professional learning that our principals are doing as leaders.
So it is definitely a systems approach to how do we take on new learning as executive directors, side by side with our principals around the curriculum? How does then the principal go in and give formative feedback to the teacher to lift their level of learning? And how do we, through that coaching and supervision and evaluation, work with the principal side by side to support?
So really, when, again, when we, when we're talking about what the, we're trying to articulate as well as possible, what does it look like to take, go from the district goal into changing practice in the classroom? The core areas that we identified here are actually aligned with the principal evaluation rubric as well. So, so what we're doing with our, our coaching of principals, can I have the clicker, please?
Thanks.
Is deeply aligned in how we're evaluating our principals. And Judy's working with, with the principal as well.
John, before you click, I'd just like to, I want to share an observation on what I take away from what, what you talked about. When I see the, the phrase professional learning and growth, what, my takeaway on what you just described is, that's creating a new normal. Because learning and growth means you've got a new normal. And, and then when that becomes the new normal, that, that's what's, that's what has to happen for us to, I mean, learning and growth is about a new normal. And that's what you're describing, the, the power of what, what took place from, from my perspective, right?
It's, it's holding our, it's holding our principals accountable for some things that really matter in a way that changes their practice. It's not driving by the school and saying, hey, people feel pretty good here, are your scores going up, keeping discipline under wraps? You're a good principal, good to go for next year. It's getting deeper around, and changing the practice of those, of the principals, and changing our, it's really about changing our own practice.
Which is second-order change.
Yes.
For second-order change to exist, that these, these are the foundational steps for that to occur.
I was going to ask you exactly that. As a leadership team, I mean, it is a cultural shift, so you're shifting with it. Did anyone, as you're, as you're, as you've been going through this, did anyone experience any of your own conflict of like, oh, the way I was doing it is different than the way I'm doing it now?
So that's a really, yeah, that's, that's a really good question to ask.
It's my life.
Yeah, well, I answered that, right?
If you are developing, effective leaders really develop the systems and the culture for feedback, for that continual growth, that professional growth. And in order to do that, you have to really be reflective on your own practice. And one of the things that we often talk about is, everybody does what they do with the information they have at the time. And that when we take on new learning, that doesn't mean that what you did in the past was wrong, it's that you're growing and making it even better because of the new learning that you've taken on. And that, I can tell you in the schools that, where the principals are really able to grow that culture of continuous school improvement through professional growth, it is that they're able to work with the teachers in the classroom around giving them formative feedback in a, a very vulnerable but non-judicial way. And that's critical.
Well, we have to be able to model that, because if we can't do it, how can we expect our students to do it, right? So.
Christina, may I, I'd like to answer that also, because it, and I'll be brief, I promise, is, you know, when John talked about the microcosm of a classroom where there's an, you know, adult in a classroom of students, and what that learning community looks like, my answer to your question is, I've learned to check myself, or I, but I have to keep reminding myself to check myself, that if I seek to always answer for them, then it's my learning, and it's my ownership. And we're seeking to co-design and co-create so that there's shared ownership. And, and so what you saw in the areas of emphasis at secondary is not Judy and I or district office deciding those are the areas of emphasis. As John indicated earlier, the principals informed us. And so it's a matter of calibrating so that we can engage in more of a thinking partner, coaching relationship, as opposed to we told you kind of a thing. Because that would be then about our ownership, so.
Yep, so, and it, I think that our principal supervisors, principals become particularly because they want to fix things, and they're good at fixing things. Then when somebody becomes a good principal, and we're looking for somebody to supervise principals, we pick one of our best fixers to come in and, and, and help. That's, that's, and I'm not saying that, so our tendency, when we're listening to a principal put a problem out there, is to say, say, hey, when I was a principal, did you, you know, I did this, did you try this? And that gives the person the fish rather than teaches them how to fish. And we're, we, we need to be part of making sure that we're thinking partners, and we're co-constraining, and we're, we're, we're building our own skills together and, and how to find those solutions. So these, these are the important areas that we're focusing on as we work together with our principals.
John, can I just say one thing? Is that permissible? I'll be fast.
I'm getting a look at time, so if it's, very brief, go ahead.
It is brief. So with our work too, we are now, we are in a position of, I co, I worked with the principal today, but I had John there, I had Terry Williams with me, Nancy's been there. So my work with principals is very visible, and I'm now also receiving the feedback on my, my work. And that, could it create a little bit of angst? Yes, it does, when you know that your conversation is being evaluated.
Yeah.
So, but that's been very good for me, so.
It's all about reflective practice.
It very much is.
It's all about reflective practice.
And it's about, it's about cohesion, because when we have a teaching environment and there are working and hearing what the messaging is, we have to make sure that our messaging is, is aligned.
And it's safe to take risks.
It is.
And our clicker is, I am clicking. There we go. Who is the most important adult in the system, however? It's the teacher. The principal is viewed as the second, the research shows that the principal's the second-most important adult in the system, and that's why we're focusing intentional resource and effort on cultivating the skills together with our principals. But the most important part is the high-quality teacher. And that's why when you're, we're looking at that job-embedded professional development that you saw so many videos around, that that type of coaching is, is incredibly important. Our principals need to know what are the key instructional changes and, and changes in adult practice, so that they can help foster them in the same way we work with principals moving forward. We also need systems for, for data-informed decisions. We, we can't change unless we know what our current reality is. And so having those systems in place, and we'll hear more about some of that in, in a moment, is incredibly important. And again, thinking of cycles of inquiry and measurable outcomes. How are we doing small, meaningful experiments on the edge of growth? If we have a problem with a particular behavior of a group of students, how are we going in and saying, we think that this is going to change it? We're going to try it, we're going to measure it, we're going to watch it carefully, and if it proves to be right, we're going to do more of it, and if it proves to be wrong, we're going to figure out what we did wrong and go again with something as far as our next step. That is reciprocal accountability, it's us, us holding ourselves accountable throughout the system. So again, it comes back to that last station on our, our through-line of accountability, on the, on that, that line that we have there. We've talked about how we've gone down from the board roles to the change in the classroom, but it's really important to recognize that that goes back up. What we hear in the classroom, from our teachers, goes up to the principal and to the, the district office, as far as how we're going to support, and into our success plan writing as we go through the cycle again, and back to the district strategic planning goals. So as we mentioned before, back to that board role, we talked about policy being important, we talked about procedures being important, but really, one of the most important things you can do is hold us tightly accountable. We hear accountability, but if we, if we're accountable for every, everything, we, we have to be, we have to be accountable to the deepest things that matter most. And we want the board to be able to have specific sets of measures that can do that. And Michelle, before I pass it on?
Sure, I think one of the things as, as we look to accountability and the metrics is to really, as you look at this document, there is so much work behind this document. The data sets that are there are carefully thought of and put together, and you're going to see how the board will be able to monitor and measure the different data sets included in this document. The strategies and the thinking were all contributed by the different folks in different areas and the different parts of the, the central office to make sure that there is a coherent system, but really focused in on what that data are looking like. And we, we, we talk about the importance of learning together, the countless hours of drilling down into data to make sure that we have metrics that we could stand behind and, and display out publicly are very, very important. And in addition to that, significant contributions from Judy and Jean in various parts we see around equity and around bright workforce. But for, as we wrap up tonight, I've got Diane Dersch, who is going to show you the data dashboard, some of you are familiar and have seen it before, others have not. It's the Board of Education's data dashboard, and it is a continuous work so that people can access and understand the data. And then the other piece is Gwen has got some additional data sets around literacy and mathematics, just to show you what it looks like when you take the action steps and star, and what that measures, those measures. just to show you what it looks like when you take the action steps in STAR and what that measures, those measures.
Thank you. Here I am, over here. What I'm going to do is show you again how to access wise-dash-local. And then we'll take a look at the four areas. Thank you. We'll take a look at the four areas also that you can view to see changes and growth. And then Gwen can talk about some of those more specific things that we will include in here as we modify wise-dash-local so that it does closely match what the strategic goals are. So I'm going to start way over here. Okay, if I were to type the URL in, I could just go to wise-dash-local.org.
And you'll be providing all this information, so it's just to show-
Yeah, you don't have to memorize this, okay?
It's just to show them what's available to them.
And when I get there, okay, it takes me to the wise-dash-local webpage. And then over here on the left-hand side, it says dashboard login. So I click on dashboard login. And this retained my name because I was there. Okay, and so you have a system login and password, and that's what you would use. So I'm gonna type my password in now. I just changed mine, so my muscle memory. Hopefully, I got that, okay? And then the other thing is, because we're a consortium, these are all the schools within our consortium we actually have to choose, Green Bay Public Schools. Okay, so make sure you have that in there as well. Now mine will look a little different because I have access to a lot of things, but I will be able to show you what this looks like. This is the initial page that, that you will see and notice that it talks about our district as a whole right now. Okay, but if I go up here and then down to Board of Education, and like I said, I think my interface will be different from yours because I have a different access. Okay, notice that you can see across the top our four strategic areas. And then also a link to report cards. Now you're saying, well, this is still just the whole district here. But if I go to filter data and to school, you could find the school that you are part of, or that you're watching. And you can drill down a little deeper to see what's going on here, number of incidences, you know, enrollment, et cetera. Now I'm in demographics, okay? But I could go to engagement then and notice I've got attendance and behavior here. So I can click into these and understand more about what attendance and behavior looks like. Personalized pathways, I can do a lot of the similar things. And notice I'm in Eisenhower, so I need to go to a different school.
We have no advanced courses.
No AP classes.
No AP at Eisenhower.
So let me find, let's see. Oh, already, Arthur, Noka, Rumble. It's, it's your big data set here. So you can see the past three years and what's been involved with that. And then also academic excellence. And notice that, then you can take a look at the different categories through here as well to see what the trends have been looking like. So, once again, we have things divided out here. And I can give you, I will be giving you some direction sheets on how to get logged in and how to get to the different pieces with screenshots and things so that you can be checking as often as you would like at that point.
Does this get updated in real time, like how?
Yes, it is taking a lot of information from Infiniti Campus, our student information system. That's a nightly feed.
Okay.
So if you were to look at attendance, it would be yesterday's stuff, but yes, it is live.
Because Gwen is queuing that up. It should be noted that wise-dash-local is an initiative by a consortium of school districts as opposed to a purchased system. And so Diane and her team were behind it and started, started creating this, this platform for us to be able to analyze our data and put it in the system and so forth. So, I don't know how many school districts are in it now.
I think we're up to seventeen.
So as the more join, the price goes down.
That's really cool.
And I know Diane and some other school districts have presented on several occasions about this, so.
Okay, great.
Ready?
Well, so as Diane said, it's a consortium. And we have a Board of Education page that you can look at. And now we have our metrics that come together with our strategic plan. And it takes a little bit to get the consortium and that page and all of our metrics put together. So to bridge that for you, where Diane showed you that there is a link to school report cards, we're also going to link in some of this other data so you have the full picture. Everything that we've described tonight helps us to bring together what was on one of the first pages of Academic Excellence, which was the five-year plan, where Michelle said that we're going to have by 2023 eighty percent of our students proficient in, in reading and in math. And we'll be linking in the information of the data that we went through to show you how we would get that projection. Another way that we can look at the data, for example, Nancy was talking about Star Early Literacy and Phonemic Awareness. You'll be able to page through information in this data set of all the students. And you can look at the NCE for Star Early Literacy, which of course you can find in wise-dash-local. There's a second component though to that goal to reduce the, any gaps that might be starting with our students. And that's with phonemic awareness. So the second part of this presentation, you can see, it doesn't have all the bells and whistles of wise-dash-local. It's basically your pie charts, but it will go through and disaggregate the data. And at the end of this slide set, you'll see the information specific to phonemic awareness. So as you can see through these different static versions of the data that we have, you're able to see the full connection between everything that's in the strategic framework and what we have for academic excellence. And again, we'll be connecting that through wise-dash-local and then working with wise-dash-local to bring these pieces together for you through the dashboard.
When will that be available, Gwen, on your PowerPoint? When will that be available on wise-dash?
So, these, this information right now is, is live. And we just have to figure out, or not figure out, I should say, connect with wise-dash-local to get it on your dashboard. But it, it's already hooked into the presentation, so when you receive the slide deck, it will be there too.
Oh, we have it in, it was sent to us? You mean?
It, it's part, it's in the slide deck. So it's, it's, the link is in there.
Oh, in here? That was that data link?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll make sure that it's clearly highlighted. I can create a new slide that says.
And then I'll go into wise-dash. I think one of the things that I could see in there compared to when I looked at the STAR data the last time from last year was the, the increases already in the normal curve equivalence for mathematics in particular. You see some big improvements already.
That's, that's, it's exciting. Forty-seven point five.
So what are we looking at, Gwen? Because I can't read those numbers from here.
Oh, pardon me, I'm sorry, here, maybe if I, I apologize.
That's better.
So let me start with, so what you'll notice in our strategic framework document, we have, have it listed that fifty percent of the students will be grade level proficient in mathematics. Looking at the NCE of fifty, and we also realize in all of our school success planning, we're also making that projection to the forward exam. We, we realize that's an increased NCE. But we need to get that first baseline measure. And this is looking at math, the students that completed STAR Mathematics, a Formative Computer Adaptive Assessment. And in grades one through five, as a whole, we have forty-seven point five percent of our students that are at a fifty NCE. So we know those are students who are working with math at a grade level proficiency. And you, when we look at the reading, also we're starting to see that movement. So to get that projection of by 2023, we'll have the eighty percent of growth. We're building that in as all of these great programs and, and learning is taking place, how we'll see that and how the numbers will increase.
So that was our baseline this year?
This is as of the fall assessment window that closed October nineteenth.
Okay.
And the first grade takes STAR math, first grade to fifth grade, and then of course on up into secondary. And as far as reading, our first grade would take STAR Early Literacy. So you'll, in the data sets, you'll find a set specific for STAR Early Literacy that has it in the garden first. As you go through the, the data set, for example, this is now looking at each grade level. And then we continue to break down into students by whether they are dual-language learners or if that's English as a second language, special education, so those are there for you. Would you like me to go back to the regular presentation?
Yeah, if you want to look on that final slide.
Sure, we'll do.
And then Michelle's taking the mic.
Yeah.
This particular one or the food one?
Yep. Yep, that's it. So as we've, we've shared a lot of information with you. And it's really around a cohesive action planning that we've, have the strategic goals and the framework to help us move forward. When we think about the work of the board focused in around goals and metrics and strategic actions and steps, we hope you can see these very clearly in the documents. What I'd like to do, if amenable, is to have three things, three areas to address. We probably need to take a break, but we're interested in knowing what questions you have. What do you see as strengths in the, in the work that we're currently doing around these documents and so forth and the work? And then finally, what are the areas of, of growth that we need to keep looking at? What suggestions do you have as well to, for improvement or to add to or enhance or those kinds of things? So, kind of starting with those three. So I don't know where people need a stretch break or if we want to just keep going and then people just take-
Will you take a break or, you know, keep going and I'm going to leave?
Just keep going and take a break.
So would it, would it, would the preference be to start with the questions? Does that make sense to you folks?
Does anybody mind if I stand behind my chair?
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
We can play princess games and help out.
I don't know what the princess games are, but I like the idea. Questions?
Pop 'em one foot, segment the word.
So, I just need to shake it out. You mentioned bringing, I think Diane mentioned it, bringing the data that are in that, the reports that will, that will get, mention bringing that into this document. Is that right?
No, there's a connection. So in the document, the goals will tell you, the metrics will talk about STAR testing.
One, three, eleven.
It'll talk, under academic achievement, it'll talk about STAR. These are, these are the big five-year goals. Within that framework then, as the board, we will come forward with progress monitoring reports around the STAR goals. And every year they'll be updated in terms of overall improvements as a district, but also similar in that, the, the framework that Gwen just shared.
But I'm looking at a chart for behavioral data at the bottom of page eleven. And it is, you know, chart for graduation rates on the next page. But there's no charts to indicate, and I understand that right now we're starting at baseline because we've just started bridges, we've just solidified our ability to have, I mean, we've just reached the point where we're, we have STAR testing in all of our schools just this last year. So that's our, that's our, our baseline to seventeen. From twenty-four percent to two thousand seventeen, eighteen baseline to eighty percent. So as we work towards this five-year goal, will we have a chart?
Yes.
Like for next year where we have this year's STAR and then next year's STAR? And, and have, and have a chart for, because for all of these, so you have STAR testing for math and reading. Obviously, the graduation rate, you have, you have the chart in here. But then there will be the ACT composite score. I assume there will be a chart to show progression toward the five-year goal. Is that kind of the intention is what's gonna happen?
We have all of those. We have, Gwen showed you the chart.
Right, but I'm, all I'm asking is, are you intending to have charts like that in this outward-facing document?
We could put them in, typically I've not seen them in there. The, the year-by-year growth, they'll put a large growth and then they're monitored, but we certainly can. We, I, we've looked at a lot of models.
What would you write for next year in, in next year's?
Our number would increase.
Right, but, but you wouldn't put, okay, so what would you put four years from now? Would you have the baseline, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty?
Yes.
You would have a chart that would put that in here. Right now you don't have a chart because you just have one number, I get that. But as you move forward, you'll have comparison charts of, of whether we're going up or down in terms of getting toward a goal.
Yep, exactly. So in order to set that goal of eighty percent by 2023, we looked at our data and looked at all of the new learning that's taking place, the expected growth and how we can move forward. So what we should be bringing to you, you have our baseline which you've mentioned that's in the strategic framework. What we're looking for, and we have to keep monitoring, is we're looking for this first year to have eight percent growth. And this is in elementary first grade through fifth grade. So we've looked at the students that are that first group that will, we move into proficiency. And as we start seeing that proficiency with that NCE at fifty, we know that next step they're going to need is that proficiency towards the forward exam. So in our academic excellence school, we speak about academic trajectory. What we have built out in this five-year plan is an academic trajectory. We say in the document that we need one point five years of growth. We have students that are going to need multiple years, one point five years of growth to close the gap. So what you see in this projection for math and, or pardon, this one's ELA and the next page which has math, it's looking at moving the students as they're going along. So we have this macro view of how the growth should proceed over the next five years. So when we come back, we need to report to you, did we see this first amount of growth? And if we did not, we need to adjust, but also reflect, why didn't we get that growth that we had thought about?
And that would come in the summertime, once you've completed your STAR testing, the end of the year STAR test.
You are correct, yes. And, and with that link, then we also know, as we're doing this, we can project into the forward exam and know what that's going to look like too, but you are correct.
So, so Mike just clarified what I was trying to ask you, did it better than I did. Are we looking for a rolling, a rolling data? So it'll keep increasing, so this year we're at this and then next year we're here. Or do we want it static and, and just stacked out like that? Do you see what I'm saying? Because we're starting with baseline. So in other words, this year we're at what percent?
Twenty, oh, pardon, it's right over here. Uh, ELA is twenty-nine percent?
Twenty-nine, so then we would go and then, then-
It's at twenty-four.
Right. This is projected out for a number of years, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't be rolling. It would just, you would see it all, whereas static or, or just the opposite.
To me, I think it's helpful to the public- To me, I think it's helpful to the public.
Because we, we can do this.
That we're, hopefully, that we're making progress. So if you have a.
In the same format that you're looking at it in terms of your, your analysis of what's happening, which would mean ongoing or rolling, however you want to term that, as opposed to.
I'm now confused myself, but. No, no, I understand. So, so like I said, we have these documents and we can easily put them in there.
Yeah, well, I don't want that in the forward, in this document. I mean, that's, that's too complicated.
Correct.
Yeah.
But, but you would have, you would have your growth goal, year by year by year? And then you'd put how you achieved it?
I mean, yeah, you have your growth goals in here.
Correct.
So I, I would like a little chart that.
I think we're saying the same.
Similar to this graduation that says, okay, two thousand seventeen is twenty-four percent, two thousand eighteen, it's this. So your chart then has two boxes.
So people can follow along.
Three boxes and then four and then five.
We can do that.
So that the, when you say this is our goal, then you also can, can look very quickly to see, is the trajectory going to get you, get you to your goal? And the, and the public can very easily see that.
Yep.
I think we could create a mock-up of what that looks like too, so that we can, we can have it, you can see what it looks like. Because if it, if it turns into a tiny little chart with a thousand numbers on it that we don't want, this is kind, this is, this is the, the guide for the public, but we want some precision.
Well, you have it already, and maybe it was up there, I don't know, but the, what you had presented a couple of months ago, showing the, showing the progression, the steps that, you know.
We have the ACT steps, we have those. So we could, we can do a couple of things and put them actually in the document or link them either way, you know, depending upon how complex they look. Put something simple and link or, we can work on that.
You could just do simple and then for people that.
Want to drill deeper.
Drill in.
You could go.
Put links, because this will be online, I assume. Yeah, this is live online.
Yeah, because the book would be linked.
Okay. Ed, you got a question?
I do, yeah, I have several things and, and actually, I'm going to kind of amalgamate when you say you're looking for three things there.
Or more.
You just have to kind of interpret. First of all, thank you for all of this, for everybody. I mean, I, I recognize, and we all recognize, the amount of work that's gone into this and it is very, very helpful. So my first question, comment, what have you, is for Michelle. And, and it references this, this model, this learning system model. And with the breakdown, with the definitions, and I'm looking at safe and supportive environment, and at the same time, I'm looking at pages fifteen and sixteen in this document. Specific to safe and supportive environments, within the definition, it says, create a student-centered learning climate, support social, emotional learning practices. What I'm looking for is, I'm looking for more specific language regarding physical and emotional safety. And I know it's folded into those terms. When we look at the five-year goal, the safety goal, or what would be regarding the student climate survey, safety being number one there, feeling physically safe at school. However, what about having a, excuse me, a discrete action step that we might list on page sixteen? So it looks like John's got something to say.
John is ready.
I'm sorry, I'm itching to go.
He is. Go ahead.
So, so different departments are the process owner for different elements of the work. Even though we're, we're working together, we're working in concert, different departments have a different role. So thinking about the student services department, they are the process owner to an extent of the climate, culture, and safety work. But we know that if they have ideas and, and action steps that are, that are out there that aren't something that we're working into our, this portion of our plan, if they're, if we're not holding principals accountable and holding ourselves accountable to have those systems in place and to focus on the social, emotional learning aspects, then it, it won't necessarily happen. It'll happen in pockets, but it won't happen systemically.
I, I know that, John, and I know these things are happening. Where, you know, I started all that and I'm drilling right down to the action steps and the fact that this is something that we're going to be sharing with the public. And I know that every mom and dad and grandparent out there wants to know that their children are coming to a safe and secure environment. And I think we should be talking in here.
My apologies.
About what those action steps are.
My apologies, I thought you were talking about page sixteen of the PowerPoint. The PowerPoint. And what I was, what I was saying is that we, we are implementing the actions and supporting the actions that student services and the behavioral team has. But what, what we definitely need are articulated steps within this, within this outward facing document that explain to the public, how are we keeping our kids safe? How are we making sure that we have inclusive environments that are supportive of, of our kids' social, emotional learning needs?
Ed, I think you just got to the question that I had on Monday about how do we communicate to the public and learn intentionally about safety and security and what else you do. So thank you.
Oh, well, you're welcome. I'm happy to be of service.
So, so noted, and we will address that because you're absolutely right and we can easily do that. Thank you for that.
Okay, my, my next comments or questions are for John here. And I'm from page seven from this document.
I'm going to answer those, no.
Well, for anybody who wants to weigh in.
Go ahead.
First of all, and, and this is for everybody, I truly appreciate the fact that you are utilizing that Marzano work, district leadership that works. When that came out in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, I thought it was a fantastic work. You know, getting a little technical here, the meta-analyses and the effect sizes that they, they share in that, you know, research jargon, what have you. But basically, what he and his team did was look at practices and looked at the results that these practices have on student achievement, and they rated them. And he came up with those, you know, kind of a rating system. So I, I really appreciate that you, you are using those. I want to ask you to comment on two of the bullet points specifically, establishing non-negotiable goals for achievement and instruction, and then monitoring achievement and instructional goals. And talk, if you would, a little bit, John, about the nuts and bolts of that. You know, what does that look like? What are we seeing as far as having those non-negotiable goals? And then, you know, from that, monitoring those?
And I, I also want to be able to have people articulate if there's their subject area or level specificity. But in, in general, if there are specific elements of instruction that we know are best practice, we have to call out and say, these are the best practices that we expect to see, these are the, the best practices that we will see. And then we have to monitor, monitor that through frequent time in classrooms and frequent time by us in the buildings. We have a, an expectation that, that principals will be in classrooms a minimum of two hours a day. And it's important, if we're going to hold people accountable, first, we need a tool to, to make sure that it's occurring, which needs to be a walkthrough tool, similar to some of the things we heard from in the, the air report, something that might be, that it will be focused on measuring to see, is this in place? And if it's not in place, then we have to assess, what is the next step? How are we going to work with that principal in ensuring that they are getting there? And if they're not getting there, what is it that we're going to do to, and I don't mean this to sound punitive or heavy-handed, but, but we have, we have to hold ourselves tightly accountable to make sure we're doing the work and in turn, hold the principals tightly accountable and the teachers tightly accountable for this. This will, as, as we do this, as we expect uniformity of best practice, there, there will be autonomy. We have to lay out what the, what the guardrails are. There will be some autonomy for different principals based on the needs of their building or autonomy for different teachers within, within their, their, their classrooms. But we have to call out the tights in those specific areas. And if we are not seeing those tights, if we're not seeing those best practices and we call it out and it still doesn't happen, then we have to have the fortitude to, to move through that culturally. And it might mean some people are uncomfortable, it might mean some people complain, it might mean some people go to the board and say, we're doing too much.
And to that point, I'm sorry to interrupt, but beyond the theoretical, I, I think it would help the school board to know, what are those specific non-negotiables? How are they being monitored and what are the results? If you're saying, and we'll take that example of, did you say two hours per day in the classroom?
Yes.
All right, has that been, and I'm assuming it has, that has been established as a non-negotiable? All principals, this is an expectation. Now, what's the evidence? What, what's happening there? I, I think those are some things that, that we need to see, you know, beyond the theoretical.
Agreed. So we can, we can come forward with our definitions, but that's also from a cultural piece, something that we, that, that it's helpful to co-construct. If we, of course, we know certain things about what we feel need to be in place, but we have to have an open ear to the principal and the teacher and, and the students to also, to also be, be aware of, of what is the critical next step? Just like we did with the, with the strategic plan, if we from on high, from three levels up, are calling that out, we need, we need to talk with our principals and, and construct that. And we've begun that work. And Judy, if you want to articulate.
I have an example in secondary, and so in working with the secondary principals and that consensus that one of the best practices is that the building administrator is in those classrooms. And they set that goal at two hours. Actually, it was Preble High School. And so also then talk and having a document that then they list, did we get in? And that's for an internal use. Then also, I wanted to say, or have them put in, what stopped you from getting into the classrooms? Because if there are things, that goes to that accountability piece, reverse accountability, are there things coming from central or district office that are stopping you from getting into classrooms or things that we can then take and adjust? So again, that's an ongoing piece. District common assessments, as I started with that, with the secondary piece, we have district common assessments in the core areas after each unit. But as I've gone out and worked with different buildings and, and the principals, sometimes they're given, sometimes they're not. So is that a non-negotiable? And that's the conversation we're having, is the expectation that if we have a district common assessment, that it's being administered.
I'm going to be coming back to that. I've got specific questions for you on that one.
Yes, so those are the things that I'm thinking, you know, when I think about non-negotiables as well as the instructional framework. If we say we're about gradual release responsibility by Fisher and Frye, what does that look like in all the classrooms?
To the comment about, you know, basically, the board being able to support when, when we get calls and that. And again, I appreciate the fact that you're basing it on, on these works here that, that Marzano and his team had put together. These are not things that were just pulled out of a hat. These are things that are, are research-based and, and again, the effect size of these practices is strong. In other words, the things that you're talking about have been proven to have a, a positive effect, positive correlation to student achievement. It's helpful, let me finish, Michelle. It, it's helpful to, to bring that forward when you're talking to us about these non-negotiables. These are why we're doing them, here's the evidence behind it. So now I'm repeating myself, but I, I would just, I just hoping over to be able to support what the administration's work is, that you bring those things forward. Because yes, you're asking people to change practices and it's going to be uncomfortable. And, you know, to be able to have that in our back pocket to say, well, we know why they're asking you to do this, and we know that there's a positive correlation between principals, you being in the classroom, or teachers, you're doing formative assessments, and student achievement, and we're not going to equivocate on that. So I'll get off my soapbox on that one.
I think it's an important piece. What I would ask is that the construction of those non-negotiable, we, we have to be very precise and careful about what we call out as non-negotiable. And the process that, that Marzano lays out as well, from the articulation of the board goals to the putting in place of strategic actions and then the calling out of those non-negotiables, it's important that we first knew what the goals were and second, that we know what our action planning is. And then we can, we are in the process of, of articulating the non-negotiables and, and can share those with the board and, and make sure that they align with, with what we're all comfortable from.
And certainly, the, one piece that's in there that wasn't specifically mentioned are the supports for those.
Yes.
Asking people, and the supports have to be strong. I'm, I'm sorry, Michelle.
No, you said something very well. You said several things very, very important. That research is so powerful that it talks about, you, you said the positive effect. What he also showed with a lot of research was when, they call it tightly coupled or loosely coupled, when central office, a district office works closely in the alignment that John just talked about, you get positive results when you identify those non-negotiables. When you don't, it's detrimental to large systems because it, it is only as, as successful as whoever is making those decisions inside. And you don't get the, the leverage of support and professional development like you would if you have it tightly coupled. So I, I appreciate you bringing this up because I, I think that that's been a sticking point sometimes for a long time in certain, certain places and, and to be able to identify those in concert with, with your principals and, and move that forward and provide those supports.
If you happen to have six copies, and I say six because I still have mine heavily noted in.
I think we do, actually. We, we have some and it's.
I've got one, one more thing and then I'll be done.
Thank you for that.
And Judy, you, you talked about common assessments. So there's a couple of things here that, that I want, would like you to comment on. And let's start with that. What is the current status with common assessments, both at the building level and the, and the district level? Because this, like a lot of things that we've talked about, has been around for years and years and years and years and years. And it's, you know, it's not news, but, but what's the current status on it?
The, there are actual district common assessments. I will say that when it comes to consistency in administering, administering the assessments, that there is a lack of consistency. So that is the piece that I'm working, Mike and I are working on when it comes to, at the building level. And recording the results and having a system to bring back those results.
Have there been any, have they been directed to be used or is it still kind of optional?
My understanding that it was option, I don't know. I can't speak to what happened in the past. As in my role over these last few months, my expectation is that they are administered.
They are, I'm sorry.
That they are administered.
Okay. And it'd be helpful to hear about that too. What, where are the common assessments? I mean, what subjects, what grade levels and what's the utilization?
Sure.
Similarly, with lesson plans, lesson plans was, was mentioned in the presentation. What's the current process as far as lesson plan monitoring?
It varies at the building level. There are some who will look at the lesson plans on a weekly basis. When we were having this discussion with the secondary principals, we reference board policy on, on lesson planning. But I also want to make sure that it is meaningful. I don't want people to say that you need to turn your lesson plans in on Friday and then just go through a checklist and that you're not doing anything with them as that building principal. So at this point, we're still working through exactly what that looks like at the building level. But the expectation is that, that you have a plan, that you have a target listed so that, and that target is clearly articulated then in the classroom.
Okay, well, last, last point then is, is just, I think with lesson plan monitoring, common assessments and grading practices, if we don't have those nailed down, I, I don't know how we can say we've got guaranteed and viable curriculum district-wide. So I, I would hope that those are, are priorities.
Yes, they are.
Really strong priorities.
Yes, I would agree, a hundred percent.
Thank you, that's all I've got.
So I had only one question really, and Ed, Ed covered a lot on this topic, but I was, I, I think, you know, this is a, this is a theoretical presentation, very heavy on theory, which is, which is important and we're, we're good, we're good at that here. I think our book, you know, as, as far as the, the book, learning and knowledge and study of educational best, best practices is, is just very strong here across, across the board. And I want to make sure we don't lose sight when we look at the, when we look at the public-facing document of having, it reminds me of a, a time when I did, when I was student teaching, that I was, had to help a student, she took so many notes that it was just so full of, of stuff, it's not be useful, so I had to help her take notes off of. So I had to help her take notes off of her notes. And in one case, I think we maybe had to go another round past that usually not. But making sure that the, you know, I would think though, there are, there are some specifics in here that the, the public would be probably very interested in knowing. If that, you know, principals, yep, they have, they have meetings and they have district things they need to do that are important. But on, you know, we're expecting our principals to spend 10 hours a week in the classrooms. I'm assuming that we don't set it up so strictly that, nope, I can't go to a, a one-day thing in Madison because then I'd lose my two hours, but we're gonna, then we're gonna do more on other days in the, in the long run. I think that was, I was really glad to see that. I was wondering how far we're, if that was in the early processes or if we're pretty, or if that's a set expectation and that is a...
It's early process. We have it in some buildings and it's part of our plan. And it's the work that we're, we always have a strong focus on increasing time in the classroom. We wanted to have this opportunity to do the check-in with the board to see, do these steps align with what, with what you feel are going to be effective? And this, this to a degree blessing allows us opportunity to take them further into the expectation phase.
What was, I know we've had expectations for teachers, or I mean, principals in classrooms before. Did we had a, was it a time expectation like this, two hours? Or was it a number of teachers? Or was it not even spelled out that specifically?
Educator effectiveness.
Well, no, it was even before educator effectiveness that we talked about this.
During the supervision evaluation process, if you were in a summary year, you needed to do three formal observations and we would date them on top of the evaluation forms. So that was about evaluation.
The principal would do that?
The principal would.
Okay, that's, okay. So this is, this is, this two hours in the classroom then is on top, on top of the educator effectiveness work. But it's, I mean, it's related, obviously. You've got to be in the classroom to do that work.
Yes.
But it's a, it's a, it's separate from what they've been expected to do.
It's an add-on to that. It's not, it's not, I mean, the, the, the folks who are in the supervision cycle who are going to be, receive a summative that year. I mean, the time you're spending in there would count towards that.
Sure, yeah, yeah. But this is, but this is more probably than what they were doing the last few years.
My understanding, I can't speak to what happened the past few years.
Okay.
Okay, so this, this just went for me from being really happy because I thought it was this far down the road. Now I'm finding it's this far down the road and it's a, it's a vision. And I think out of, out of a good reason, a reason of wanting to do a thing right, that sometimes we take, in fact, very often we take a very long time to, to roll it out. You know, I would, I would be happier if we said, with a plan to provide support, I would, I would feel better about us in certain cases. But I think principals being in classrooms is so important. I would, I would be okay with hearing from you that, you know, at certain buildings, it's, it's too much right now and we, we overreached or we went too fast on that. I'm okay with, I, for me individually, I'm okay with hearing that, much more so than I would be that, you know, hearing that we finally got there gradually by the end of my board service someday in the future. If that makes sense?
There's, there's a huge sense of urgency around this.
Actually, they have it, as we came together and developed the secondary plan, there are a number of, for the eight schools that I supervise, that like I'd mentioned earlier, we have a Google form that the principals just, again, record. And it's not like a huge evaluation piece, but it's a way for us to kind of hold ourselves accountable as well as communicating back to me regarding, what are some things that are stopping you from getting into the classroom?
Sure, and then from the perspective, what can we do about that? So then going a step on top of that, then is, has central office set a target for time in, in buildings?
At the secondary level, we have calendared out throughout the course of the year, a commitment with each building as part of a regular cycle that is supportive of our role in engaging in instructional walks, evaluation and monitoring in support of the MLSS process. I mean, those are the strategic steps that are, the specific steps that are within our department and team plan, that we didn't go into all those, those details tonight, but those are listed in our plan and that's what we do. So for instance, tomorrow, we will start our day at Washington Middle School for, yeah, two hours doing those activities as part of that specific step in, in our role. So yes.
We know that what gets monitored is what gets done. And as I said earlier, whatever format would be appropriate, I, I think the board should be informed about the progress on this. And to Andrew's point, you know, we don't want it just to, you know, six years from now it's happening, so.
I can tell it's urgent. I was in a school, it was last week, and the principal, you were with me, and the principal came and said, it's Ben. And she started talking about the concerns about not being able to get in as much as she wanted to. So we had a discussion about what, what was blocking her from getting where she needed to be. So, and it was, it was self.
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't ask her about it. She immediately, so it told us also that, and I thought that was very important, is that saying, I need the support and I believe you can help me with it.
Others on the board feel the same way. Would you like to see that kind of data?
Yeah, although I'm not thinking it needs to be, you know, presentation, formal kind of thing, and an update kind of, you know. I mean, maybe it's a, again, it's, if it's whatever you just said, it's not, if you don't monitor it, you don't do it. Maybe, maybe we have a, an ongoing heading in our green update that says, you know, whatever, whatever you want to call it or whatever we're monitoring, but, but, you know, something like that where it needs to be filled every, you know, twice a month. And then as you look at what you're doing and, you know, then you, you can say, oh, I can, you know, I can update the board that we have, you know, a hundred percent of our principals by, you know, February have, are in classrooms, you know, two hours every day. You know, and then that could be as simple as that. I don't know if that's okay with you, Ed?
Yeah, something, yeah, but I, I think the message to the principals that the board really wants to see that you're doing that. And if you can't, then we need to, we need to know that and address that.
Could we put it on the dashboard? For the board?
Yeah, that would be specific to the board dashboard.
I'd like to clarify, I, I'm going to offer a perspective around the dynamic of the view of the board's role, the view of administration's role, the view of the principal's role and the work we're doing to establish the sort of culture that doesn't make it feel like it's about supervision, monitoring at all levels, but rather leaning into the joy of embracing a culture of learning that you saw through the video clips today. I would be concerned, in my specific example referencing this, was years ago, we called out a very specific task called daily posting of high-quality learning targets. And the next day, you walk around and you see masking taped up things on people's walls that had no bearing to the true teaching and learning environment that we're seeking to create. So I'd appreciate continued dialogue before committing to the type of internal data we're using to forge that culture of professional learning community with staff that we work with versus what is truly the type of metrics that a governance role would, would play relative to monitoring and holding us accountable in an appropriate way. And I may be out of line in saying that, but I, I'm hesitant to head down this path knowing where we are relative to establishing a culture of this is what teaching and learning and continuous improvement looks like.
Can I, I'm so glad you said that because that's exactly what I was thinking as we were having that conversation. So you kind of took the words, the thoughts out of my head. And so I think a part two of that would be, Mike, and this is for all, any of you, but, and I was looking at specifically the goal around math and reading, but sort of these big academic goals, I mean, these are big goals, right? How, how do you all see yourself moving forward to achieve, try to achieve this goal, to have the systems and processes in place to, to reach this goal, but at the same time not make it so much about the goal that you forget about all the other things that bring joy to learning?
I believe I have some examples of what we did to address both, Mike, and your question. Is that we have embedded in our rollout, whether it's MLSS. In other words, it's our practices that come with the requirement of observation. So for instance, a principal observation is required prior to a student moving from a tier-one intervention to a tier-two. Because we have to rule out that it's not instruction, that it is a learning, a block for the child. The other piece is that both our math and our literacy, embedded professional learning with our principals and continual work as a team supporting our principals, we have look-for's or we call learning walks. Where the principals go with their coaches on learning walks, they'll go with different, they'll go, they'll go with us on learning walks and we all learn together. So our focus is on learning and improving student learning, not on, we're in your classrooms, observing your classrooms. I would, did what Mike would say, the environment we walked into, if you would walk into central, into one of our, our elementary schools and you would not get past the office. They would make sure that anything had to be done, we met in the office, as to not get into the school. Now, when I walk in the school, it's like, come and see what we're doing here. The, the, the culture has just shifted. And it's such an open risk-taking, open atmosphere to knowing that we're all learning from each other and we all have gifts. If they don't let us in their classrooms, we can't grow. Because our teachers are our children. So I want you to know that in our practices that we've embedded in elementary, all the way through, through our line of inquiry or the teaching of our principals, we have documents, we could absolutely document those just, we do monitor it, but we could make it more of a formal monitoring. But we want you to know that even part of our MLSS process, teach, the principal observations required before children move through levels to rule out that, that the instruction is not the barrier to the learning.
So, so Nancy, what, and what I'm hearing, I still, I, there's a balance somewhere in here that has to be achieved. In other words, there is some metric that would tell you that because you couldn't get there without doing that.
That's right.
So those are the metrics that you would monitor, is what you're saying.
Yes.
And it's, and the only, so it's, it's, I can't, I can't get the medal for the marathon unless I do the marathon, right? So I can't give you the medal. That's the outcome that I'm trying to achieve as a result of this effort. If that's, that's probably not a great analogy. But the point being, there is an outcome as a result of the two hours. It's not just to go two hours.
Right.
And, and to Mike's point, and I remember that well. There were high learning targets put in classrooms and I, I was just beside myself when I had a conversation and realized they didn't know why. And this, this gentleman said to me, and it was a teacher, he said, when he finally saw that connection, it was real important. In the meantime, it was compliance. That's not, not it, so, so I would offer this if we could, is to identify what needs to be monitored that says, you can't get there without doing this.
That's right.
You know, if that makes, and, and does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So, so it's really the end goal and what is that? It's not, it's not the, what you're doing, the process.
Go ahead, go ahead, Andy.
I agree. It has to be monitored.
So I just, so this is, and again, I think this, you know, this, you know, discussion started out with me talking about central office being in the, in the buildings and then got into the, it kind of circled back to the, the principal piece in the classroom. So I think, I think that having a targeted reason of being, you know, intentional and we're, we're looking at this when we're going into the classrooms is important. But I can tell you also, what's important is, you know, I'll pick on John, but others did it, others did things like this too. Right when Washington was first, you know, when we first realized that things were beyond what, what we had thought. You know, one of, one of the things that I heard from someone was just that you showed up there early, you, you walked and talked and I, with a staff person who was, you know, pushing two, two garbage cans and you grabbed one while you talked. And that was, that, whatever you were talking about at the time, and it wasn't, you know, you weren't, you weren't there to make sure the garbage was being done on time. You're just there to, to talk and participate. And people really respect that when that happens with, you know, with the central office person, provided that they're engaged. And most of the feedback I got was that most of the time that was the, the case. And with, certainly with everyone who's around this, this table, it was. And I don't want to get so, I wouldn't want to see us so caught up in, you know, okay, if I'm going to go to, you know, to school X, I'm, you know, okay, but I need to make sure it's on a day when they're going to be doing observations. You know, maybe sometimes, and I'm just off the cuff here, maybe sometimes it would just be the, you know what, to the principal, why don't, why don't you take the whole morning in classrooms and I'll, I'll cover the crises that come through? And I'm not saying that can be done by everyone.
And those conversations as well.
Okay, so, I mean, that's, you know, that's a big deal. And at any, all levels, you know, people have a, you know, that, that means, that means a lot. You know, when I was a lead and a team lead in a nonprofit, you know, it was, I mean, I just, you know, when I would cover the front desk for someone for 45 minutes so they could work on a project somewhere else, that was a huge deal. And I didn't know, I didn't realize how huge of a deal it was until I started, you know, doing it. So I hope we don't lose the, you know, the, it's just as important to me that there's some informal time in buildings as there is formal time in, in buildings. If it was only ever formal time, I think something's maybe lost.
I agree. I think that, I remember, actually it was about probably 10 or more years ago, Ed was in a grad class with me, I don't know if you remember.
Oh, I do.
And I remember you articulated how important servant, service leadership was, or servant leadership was to you. And that type of action is critical if we want to have the trust and the relationship and rapport with our leaders where they're going to tell us the truth. If we, if we become about have really heavy-handed accountability and immediate public display, it's, it will erode that, that, that opportunity. We have to have that right balance of support and accountability that we've, we've talked about along with those informal opportunities. And now I'm going to say something that's either brave, stupid, or both, probably both. If we're going to shift the culture and we're going to shift the structure and the resources to do this, if we're saying this is, this is the it, then we have to be better and braver about articulating the things that we're, we're not going to be able to do and not focus on. And what I mean by that is, is if there's something that comes up as a personal interest of mine, I'd really like to focus on more cooperative learning, which I think is a good thing. And suddenly I decide, this is what we're doing, we're going to put it in with, with it not being part of my action plan and I'm going to put all kinds of resources to it and make it a thing, then that's going to deviate from the, the other things that were listed and said were important to do. And so in, in asking the board for us to be all cognizant and working together towards making sure that we are allowed to realign our focus of time and resources deeply and explicitly to this, that's when we'll, we'll have a change in practice. If we, and, and if something comes out that is, I'm not saying that the board shouldn't mandate. The board definitely needs to mandate. The board is accountable to the community and needs to point out to us things that need, need to be looked into. At the same time, we need to work together to make sure that those fit within this if it's going to work. it's going to require a big portion of time, and that we can see how it best aligns.
And I would ask you not to, not to, and Mike specifically, don't ascribe negative, negative meaning behind what we're asking here for. You know, this isn't a gotcha. You know, you folks are saying, "We're telling people we want them to be in there two hours a day." Great. And I know why you're asking that, because it's been proven to be effective. And then you say, you know, "We also want to know why not." Well, I think, you know, this is a, this is a very powerful thing to do, and if people can't, I trust them to say why they can't, and then we need to know that. The board needs to know that. This, this is a, this is a, you know, a highly effective method to, to get at student learning. But, and, and I know, I mean, I, you know, I wore those shoes for a long, long time. What are the things that are getting in the way, and what can we do about it? What can we do to help? But please don't put the message out there that you, we want to be bean counters on this. That's not the point at all. And I got that from what you said there, Mike.
Okay.
And, and, you know, that's, that's not the case at all.
What I took from what you offered earlier is a, a clarity around the need to focus that you're supporting our emphasis on common assessments, ensuring lesson plans being effective, and grading practices. And that is absolutely a message that is reinforced, and in terms of our area of emphasis, we totally agree. I'm more about articulating concern about the type of data that is brought to the board and public level versus the type of data that is more internal, that is our formative data. Just like in the classroom, we, we try to support teachers in not ascribing summative grades based on formative practices. I don't want the publicly reported out data to be our formative data, which some of this is the formative example. I, I appreciate what you're offering relative to the area of importance, and I heard the sorts of things that I believe, it's great, it gives us reinforcement of what to really say, "Look, this is a through line of accountability," but I just wanted to articulate that I, it is, it is difficult to bring out formative data in a publicly, public forum, which is what I infer from what you were offering.
Well, to that last, we did, we did talk about, just in terms of, of an update, you know, just a...
Yeah. We were talking about formative and internal.
I don't need a chart of what percent of, you know, which, you know, which prin, who this principal is 3.8 hours, is, you know, that's, no, nothing like that.
Yeah, and the, the dashboard, Mike, is the board dashboard. It's not a public dashboard.
Only we would, only we can see it.
I think that, I think what, by doing an update where it started, I was trying to make it somewhat of this easily accessible, because if you're like me, you read it, or you remember you read it and you can't find it. More importantly, that, that what a written piece does is, is offers context to. And to your point, Anna, I think it's really well taken, and it goes back to the principal confessing to us, "I didn't get in, but here's why." The here's why is what we have to address.
Right.
You know, because isn't it...
And if one of the here's, and if one of the here's why is that principals are expected to be out of the building for various meetings, then that, that's on us. That's, but if you're spending more time in the buildings, then perhaps there's less need for principals to leave the building, and...
So, I want to go back to something you said to John about what you're not going to do anymore, and I think that's just a, a significant consideration moving forward so that we can communicate why we're not doing things, you know, especially as parents. We can sort of have a knee-jerk reaction, "Well, you used to do it this way. Why is that not, is that not happening anymore?" And so, that communication piece to really understand that the decisions are grounded in a really strategic framework over the course of, that has integrated goals, in a way that really is clear to parents, will help you to get out in front of your message. So, that's something to consider. And I know no one will be shocked about this, but I would also like to see the district wellness committee added to the action steps under the community involvement, because I think we need to show that we're prioritizing wellness, and that is another area where parents can get involved. So, if you could add that in, I would love that. Um, it's on sixteen...
The senior partners list?
Sixteen. No, under the action steps for continue and establish or reestablish meaningful and community engagement opportunities. Thank you.
I want to articulate, it's not, I wasn't trying to say that this is a board, central office issue. It happens at each level of the organization. There are, there are things that the principal wants to do and things should happen that are put upon the teachers that might be in the way of the best practices that they need to do their work in a meaningful way. Same, same with us, that we, we sometimes put upon our principals, like you're articulating, that we need to have these five really important meetings downtown for X amount of hours, and then we're wondering, "Why, why aren't they in the classroom?" I think we, what I'm saying is that we have to be, all be self-reflective at each level in thinking about how can we best shift the resources, focus on instructional leadership and accountability for teacher support and change in action.
I would agree, and I think maybe, maybe, John, it would be helpful for all of us as we run into these roadblocks ourselves, or whatever, and we need to start really, you know, we talk, we never look at what that really looks like and drill really deep into it ourselves. So, we reflect separately, we might do some things, we say, "That's too much meeting time." We try a virtual meeting, and then we go back to what we did before. So, it's really addressing things differently on our end too, and part of our learning needs to go there as well. But the other piece, I, I sincerely appreciate, you know, I feel a strong sense of accountability, and I appreciate the support from the board to be able to, if we could do these call-outs of best practice, because there are things that we can't control either. I mean, there have been a number of things that have come our way that we have no control over that come from the state and federal government that, that come into our system, and all of a sudden, a systems change has to, you know? But as long as we have these clear pieces, then we can come back to you and say, "You know what? We can't get to this because we've got these other new pieces that have come into the system that we have to address," whether it be a new assessment or whatever. And one of the things that I think is really intentional around the STAR report, and the reason we're port, we're reporting out on the STAR is because we can control that. It is a nationally normed test, but it's something that the district can continue to use, so that whatever they choose to use in Madison, you can still know how well we're doing, instead of, they changed the Puts score at the, the state test, and pretty soon, we had this, what, three years ago, when they changed the, they went from the Badger exam to the Forward, and all of a sudden, these kids who were performing here, were performing here, and the parents are going, "What?" You know, and, and, and without these kinds of tools, we can't know for sure. That's why this is our, our internal work as a district, but we'll do both and know, and know exactly where our kids are at.
We won't know what's going on unless we're in the classroom, in the school. And Tuesday is our next principal meeting. We've, we've shared things in, in different ways, but I think that it's important for us to share this. This, this is our goal, this is what we need to, to self-monitor and, and improve. It's something that we need to improve internally as well, and that's something that we can focus on as, as our, one of our strongest focuses.
When I, I would offer too, that, as you talk about, you know, what you might be doing to, to get, get some away, principals' ability to do their work, and the same goes with teachers, I would offer that, you know, as, as a board, these are our goals, and this is where we'd like to be successful, and, and we're putting our efforts into. And if there are things we do as a board that makes it hard for you to do what you need to do...
We get in the way.
Yeah, we're getting in the way, that I think we need to, we need to know that too, because it's, it's, it's important, at least personally, it's important for me that, that you are able to do your best work, and if I'm part of the problem, then I want to know that.
But to Christina's point, that's what this is about. It's the roadmap, the board's roadmap that's been laid out, and these are the directions, and...
Right.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, but I mean, I think it's, you know, we're all, I mean, I, I see this as we're all in this together, and part of our job is accountability piece, and making sure that what, what people say they're, you know, is happening, is happening, and we need to update it to show that we're going in the right direction. But we also need to be part of supporting the process so that we get there.
Appreciate it.
So, that's just my, my ask, is that, is that if there are things we can do better that, that will help you do your job better, that, that's...
I don't think we've, we've put anything new on the table to respond to the things that you've shared with us.
Can I ask one other, I don't want to put more work on you all, but just a consideration with this as well, since it's in a draft form right now.
Absolutely.
There's significant research that shows that the food that we serve, our food service, is tied to academic achievement. Our food service is amazing. I think it would be a misstep if we didn't include that in here, and to highlight our, our goals around food, and our breakfast program, and the snacks, and the dinner program, and CEP, and the community eligibility.
I think, as, as you look at this and spend a little more time in it too, if there are other areas, we, this is a, a reach at this level, and that doesn't live in this house, in this building, and so, I mean, there are, we knew there were gaps in here. But I, I have to thank Lori Blaisley every time people make changes. At one point, people were emailing her from every direction, on page this and that, and then I get this text, "Are you trying to maybe make me quit?" Anyway, it, it worked out really well, and it's a good start, and we're grateful, so...
And I, I could tell Lori's hand was all over this.
Yes.
Very well done.
Yeah, it's very well done. Beautiful.
A lot of information, so...
Anyway, very grateful to all of this conversation, and all of us. And, and again, we are open to suggestions, thoughts, reflective pieces that we can do. It is about our kids that we all own, share, take responsibility for, so we're excited about where it's going to go. And I, you know what, Nancy? No one gets more excited than watching you watch teachers.
She does. I love sitting next to her. I was like, Terry!
You should see her, she was at the...
She's like jumping.
Yeah, she was.
Yep, she is.
Good meeting.
Right to, Anne.
It was, yes.
That's like, yeah, that's...
You can feel the energy.
It's what gets you out of bed in the morning.
That's, it's, it's four minutes after eight, we're not going to go till the polls close, or the votes get counted.
All right, and we do, we do have a closed session, so I'm going to read that motion. "The board convened in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.1, 19.851F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal risks or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary considerations, specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the investigation of any personnel, personnel risks, or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit personnel investigations. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law." Oh, "The board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session." Sorry, that was an added line. Katie moved, there's... Um, Andrew? Aye.
Sidney Coe?
Aye. She said aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Kipoy?
Aye.
Allee?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Director? Aye.
Sorry, carried seven zero, we'll convene across the hall.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.